Julie, are you, you guys ready?
I think we are.
Fire up all the electrical contraptions.
Speaking of the devil, here he comes.
Dallas, I can do it.
I need you on the microphone, Henry.
Okay.
This pops up pretty quick, then I'll be ready. Yep, good.
Okay, it is 1:01 in the afternoon, Thursday, July 13th. We will reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Members present this morning are still present and we will resume our property evaluation protest forms 422. Our first evaluation this afternoon is an in-person evaluation by Mr. Dallas Shear. Dallas, would you come forward so we can, I will read into the record, the information, and then Dallas, I will ask for you to give your commentary to us. So let me read into the record what we need to have on file here. This is, excuse me, this is protest number 313, Mr. Dallas Shear, 2699 North Highway 83 here in North Platte. Property identification number is 61965. This is, the legal description would be Pittman Second replat of Everly Edition 28-14-30, lot 1. This is 7.97 acres. Shear is protesting the valuation of land at $69,395, building of $154,100 for a total of $223,495. Taxpayer is requesting a valuation on land of $22,890, buildings of $129,771 for a total of 152,661 acres. Dallas, we've been allowing 15 minutes for you to state your reasons. So we will start now. I will ask for the folks from the assessor's office to pitch in to help answer some of those questions. So the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess the reason for my protest is...
You can sit, Dallas. You don't have to stand, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Be comfortable.
You're making me feel more like I was gonna stand up.
My property is totally landlocked, other than the access on Highway 83. There's no way to develop that land whatsoever. And the way my building's set, there's not enough room to put a county road that has to be done with the size to subdivide. So basically, the back half of my property is nothing but grass pasture. That's all it's good for. I used four comparisons today, and they should be in your handouts.
Yep.
Comparison number one joins my property to the east side. It contains comparable ground and slope drainage and soil content. It has public access from a paved county road and could easily be developed. It is only evaluated at $2,139 an acre. If I could just back up, the valuation on my property right now that they want to impose is $8,707 per acre.
That's on your property. Okay, the one that you're comparing to, this first one you're talking about...
That's comparison number one, is $2,139 an acre.
How many acres?
It has 41.53 acres.
Forty-one point five three, okay.
And yours is what again?
Mine is just shy of eight, seven point nine seven.
Okay, that's the first one you were comparing to.
The second one is just across the road from comparison number one, contains 23.15 acres. It is valued at $1,022 per acre. Compared to the $8,707 on mine. I could throw a rock and it would probably land on that property.
Okay.
Comparison number three has access from Highway 83 as well as a county road. Very easy to develop. It only has 16.94 acres and is valued at $2,667 an acre.
Okay.
And comparison four, on up on, toward the river, has 29.20 acres.
Twenty-nine point twenty, we better check and see how his valuation looks, just to be on the safe...
It's $3,241 per acre. Compared to $8,707.
Yeah, okay.
And where is that located? Can somebody point out where the first three were located?
We don't have copies of this. I don't have any to do with it.
Okay, number three is Dr. Jerry Thompson's facility.
It's all right there on North Highway 83 and Hall School Road. With the exception of number four.
Charity, might need, may need to have you explain to your acres.
Okay, so this one is...
Okay, so is the first one just above it there on Hall and 83?
No, the very first one is to the east, abuts my property on the east side.
That's forty-one point five three acres.
That's it right there.
Okay, so behind Canals?
Yes.
Okay.
That's frontage on Hall School Road.
All right. And so your property, can you bring up his property in comparison to that highlighted?
Second parcel up on the northwest corner.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Tip that, there you go.
Got you.
Now, that's yours right there, Dallas?
In the red right there, yes.
The one that's in red?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And 20 acres to the right is access from Hall School Road. And runs to the river channel, and that's Dr. Canals where the pond is.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Joe, you seeing what you need to see there?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Just when they pull the rest up, I was just gonna stay here and...
You probably messed around out there when you were a kid.
You'll never mess around out there.
You're not a kid anymore.
Oh, no. And the ponds, and the ponds, fishing, not, no.
Well, maybe not.
Okay, what we're talking about here is different acreage amounts.
Correct.
And I got educated on this yesterday because we had a very similar situation yesterday where the mathematics of just dividing the amount by the number of acres doesn't work because of, Henry, can you talk to, or Charity, can you talk to us about the tiered acreages?
Yeah, so it's the law of denomination returns. So the bigger the acreage, the less per square, or less per acre you're gonna have. The first two comps that he's got are priced as ag land though, they're not priced as rural residential. So that right there is gonna make a difference in land values. Anyway, the third one, which looks like...
I gotta get brought up here in a second here.
It just has a couple of sheds on it, so it's getting a vacancy adjustment on it. But it is priced as rural residential.
Which one is that, Charity?
That's Dr. Thompson's.
Dr. Thompson's. He is considered rural residential, same spot.
Is that the clinic area, or is that a different piece?
Right behind the clinic.
Right behind, okay.
And it has no residence, just outbuildings?
Right.
Okay.
But it is being assessed as residential.
Right, but it's getting a vacancy adjustment for not having utilities.
There's no...
No.
No sewer, no sewer, electric, water.
Mine doesn't either.
The house is on yours, it has septic and electricity and a well.
And how many acres is with Thompson's? Sixteen point nine four, okay, so more, the more acres, the lower the value per acre based on the tiers.
Charity, correct me if I'm wrong, on this type of property, the first acre is 35,000?
And he has it be 45,000.
Oh, he's lucky, huh? And then 45,000, and then the next, up to 10 acres is how much per acre?
I think it's 3,500, is that right?
Yeah, that's what it was showing on there.
So if you go over 10 acres, what is the extra acres?
It drops down, one is at 2,500, she's gonna go grab my land book, I can tell you that for sure. But it goes down 25, I think it's 2,500, and that's up to 40 acres, and then after 40...
Sure, that's, that's one of the, one of the things to take into consideration is, is when you get over 10 acres, or you get over 40 acres, all of the acres are at, not all of the acres, but the extra acres, correct?
Right.
The extra acres go at a lower level. That's why just dividing what the tax is by the number of acres isn't what they have to do.
I understand that. I have one other thing, one other comment to make.
Yeah.
The fiasco that happened back in 2020, if you'll look at the sheet that I included.
Yeah.
In 2020, they took $46,505 off the value of my house and my buildings and put it on my land.
Uh, just a minute, this is on, this is on yours right now?
Yes, this is on mine.
Page one.
Let me get there. Okay. Okay, explain that again, Dallas, tell me again.
Okay, in the year 2020, if you look at the difference in the valuations of the land...
From 2019 to 2020?
Yes, from 2019 to 2020, that's $46,505. Now, my building's did not depreciate by $46,000, and my land certainly didn't gain that much value in one year. And it's quite obvious because of the fact that I had homestead exemption as a disabled veteran, whatever level this come from, the state or what, and it wasn't just me, it was across the board. That was nothing but a backdoor attempt to circumvent anything that you get from a homestead exemption. Because you only get a homestead exemption according to state law on one acre in your buildings. So they took that value off of my one acre of my buildings and stuck it on the rest of my land.
Huh.
$46,000 worth.
I heard that, I'm just sort of waiting for them to digest that.
We don't wanna interrupt, so you let us know when you want us to give an explanation of it.
Okay, wow, I think there's, there's an explanation from 2019 to 2020, that difference in land value. Can you tell me what happened there?
That's when we revalued all the land using that tiered acre, and then including the utilities on the land also.
Okay, so... So all of his acres are hooked together then in your...
Right, they were before two, they were before two, it was just a different methodology of how we did it.
We added the sewer, the septic, and the electricity value to that land value from 19 to 20. That's when we redid all of our land and decided that we needed to be valuing those utilities within improved land parcel. So that's why there was a big jump from 2019 to 2020.
And that was applied to every property?
Go up the property record.
Yeah, it was applied to everyone, yes. And then he protested his value in 2020. Is why his improvement value decreased. It wasn't because we just did it, he come in and protested, and shit, Henry?
Well, actually, in 19, his, if you pull this up, we can show him.
Property record card?
Yeah, keep going down, no, I want...
On the protest?
Yeah, I want this, I want the front sheet. Well, it's not gonna show it because... Okay, in 2019...
Going to Vanguard, you can go to the prior year tab and show it.
Yeah, in 2019, we had 22,890 on the land. And we had 156,235 on the buildings for a total of 179,125. Okay, we did our revaluation, we reviewed the area. The land went up in 20 to 69,395. The buildings went to 143,335 for a total value of 212,730. He protested, at which time, the land stayed the same, and we moved his buildings down to 129,771 for a total of 199,166.
That doesn't show 121.
Well, we got dwelling and an outbuilding.
Yeah, you only have the one. And what's our, what's the notes?
Combine their 129. Okay, Julie?
Yeah.
So in... This morning when I challenged, when I asked about Wallace and Wellfleet and said, why are we going below this, this number that we, that we went to as a base value for a building site? Why are, you know, I'll be honest with you, that's why I questioned it this morning. Is this just because we're in a different housing area of values? That we have this fixed number now that we transitioned to in 2020? Because we've got this lot in Wellfleet that I questioned this morning, that's worth $10,000.
I think, didn't we do that on, though, as a Board of Equalization? I think we made that change.
The one in Wellfleet?
No, this one.
I'm, I'm trying to remember.
Oh, yeah.
The villages are gonna be, you know, those are gonna be valued the way things are selling in the village. Those won't be compared to these rural residential sites, or the values of the lots that are selling outside of the valley.
In the Platte Valley?
Yeah.
Is that...
Well, we have land areas.
Right, I know that.
Okay.
But I'm asking for clarification.
It's the sales in those areas that set the values in those areas.
Right.
Which you under, I'm sure you understand.
Yeah, you've got different values in different areas, proximity to town, paving and all that. I guess I get that part.
But I think you're talking about the set value above the raw land for the improvements in utilities.
Well, I am referencing that essentially.
So Henry and I did a lot of research to come up with how much a sewer would cost to install, how much a well would cost to install, what it would cost per linear foot to bring electrical onto a lot. It's, it's hard to know how far you would have to go down for a sewer or for a well, depending upon if you're in the sand hills or if you're clear down here by the river. I mean, it, you might have to go 400 feet there and only 100 here. So it's hard to estimate that, but we come up with around 25,000 total that would be on top of your vacant land price. So that's kind of where we come up with that.
So if it's vacant without those utilities, there's that, that deduction, correct? Okay, I have a question here before we move on. To answer Dallas's question, 2019 to 2020, you reduced the dwelling, the main dwelling, to some thousand dollars.
It was only $20,000.
The dwelling?
The dwelling was only...
After the protest.
After the protest, it was only $20,000.
But before that, you didn't have the outbuilding value in there.
So that's confusing. Our old system did not split those two values out, our new system does, that's why you see it split out.
Okay, so that 40,000 is partly because there's a 25,000, so it's really only about 15,000 you dropped the residence.
Right, it's actually about $20,000, or 15,000.
That was lower. Why was it lowered?
You'd have read the protest, protest notes.
Basically, it says, change the grade on the house to grade four and change condition to very good at that time, is what we did in the protest.
And that justified lowering it that amount? Okay. Does, does that answer your questions, why one went down so much?
I can understand that, but I don't, don't understand why the value on the land had to jump $46,000 in one year. Because if you look at the two figures, that's the difference between 2019 and 2020, it's $46,505.
So, so we had not revalued land since I've been here, and this year is now my 20th year. So land in the rural areas has not been redone since I have started working here. And 2020 was the first time we actually revalued land, and that was all based on sales.
And what was the reason for changing that then? Was that a directive from the state?
No, that was because of our market. We needed to, we needed to do something, we needed to do something probably 10 years prior.
So that was done on a local level?
Yes.
And we had a short case where that's one of the reasons why we chose to go with a tiered acre, because when we went, what did we call that before?
Side adjustment.
The side adjustment.
Or size adjustment.
Size adjustment, and we did have a, like a 5.2 acre piece that was valued a little bit higher, or, or see what was it, higher than somebody that had 5.4, and it was something to do with the side adjustment. And it, so we needed to go away.
We needed to give you something that made a little more sense.
Because our side adjustment might jump .5 and you needed to be at .1 or something like that.
The rounding part of it.
Okay, backing up, Charity, you made that change in 2020. Was that based on sales in the area?
The change?
Yeah, the change in the value of...
I assume that, it's something Henry did, but I assume that it's something, it's a scene that needed to be, needed to change.
Because I think that's the crux of your question, is it not?
Are you talking about the land or the buildings?
The land, isn't that the crux of...
That would have been based on sales, yes.
That would be, that change from 2019 to 2020, across the board, you changed land values.
On all rural residential and suburban residential, yes.
And added the infrastructure, the utility infrastructure, which had not been assessed to the land before.
This is the same year we switched to the new Vanguard system, and we had a lot of guidance from Vanguard people and appraisal to develop, and they actually have appraisal staff. They have appraisal staff, appraisers that...
Okay, tell us, tell us, explain to us who Vanguard is.
It's our vendor, that's who we calculate our cost approach through.
Okay.
It's HAMAS system that we...
I'm gonna take you back out of the weeds because this has come up on some other protests. And the lady in about the homestead exemption, and that is troubling to me. So let's talk about that for a minute, and maybe it's not germane to what this is. And I get, you're right, we did change that system to the fixed value, and this is a different market than Wallace. I concede all that stuff, Wellfleet.
And see, with homestead exemption, so his first acre is at 45,000. So he's getting that 45,000 exempted. So all of his additional acres, he's only being charged for 3, at 3,500 an acre for what he's not getting exempted through homestead exemption.
I'm not sure that was gonna be your question, but go ahead.
Well, the overall concern I have is that we're incongruous with the intent of the homestead exemption. And I don't know if we have the authority to do anything about it or allow it to be, but...
What do you mean?
When we set values, we have no idea if this person gets homestead or not. When we're setting and looking at sales and setting values, we don't know if this person is receiving homestead. So if he's thinking we are wanting more homestead money, so we're gonna put a higher value on his home so we can get more money, I mean, that's not the way this works at all.
It's all driven by the market, all driven by the market.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned that this is HAMAS, well, whatever. Like I said, I'm getting out in the weeds, but I just see a pattern here where it looks like people that are eligible for homestead are...
And that is another thing that we, our hands are tied, we have to follow state statute. They are very strict as far as the guidelines on, they're the ones that provide us the income tables every year, so if their income is above a certain amount, it throws them clear out. The value of their property can throw them clear out, but that is something that we, I run in September, after protests and everything are done, I calculate an average value of a home in Lincoln County. So when we calculate that average value of a home, then they, they have a formula, it's a state statute as well. You add a certain amount to that, and if it goes over that amount, it kicks them out. That's where the lady at the lake runs into trouble.
Right.
She qualifies income-based, but the value of her home throws her out.
Yeah, it's a topic for another day, but, but the point is, is that the way this is structured for homestead exemptions, just like her, what's she ever gonna do with that? She's not gonna profit from that property.
Question I have, Charity, you mentioned that the first acre, 45,000, did you get 100% homestead exemption?
No, I don't.
He got 80% last year. It just depends on the year, it looks like previous years he got 100%, several years in a row.
No, I've never got 100%.
It's written on here that you had, you get 100%, you get 100% of what the, what the state allows.
You're always gonna have...
Because you have more than one acre, you're gonna have some extra.
Because you own more than one acre, so you're always...
The problem is, you take the value off of my house and that one acre, and then put it on the rest of my land, which is not exempt. All you're doing is circumventing my homestead exemption.
You're still getting 45,000 off of your land.
I realize that.
So the rest of those 6.97 acres are only being valued at 3,500. So we are giving you that 45,000...
And if my, if my math is correct, that comes to 23,000 something.
Right.
Did you mention, are you a disabled veteran?
Yes, ma'am.
100%?
I used to be on your forums, and then for some reason, I used to fill out the form every year for the disability from the doctors, and it just disappeared. for the disability from the doctors, and it just disappeared. I haven't even been asked for it the last two, three years.
Do you have a, I mean, a VA letter stating you're 100% VA disabled?
No, not 100%.
Okay, okay.
Dallas, I do understand why, I mean, cause I'm with you. I, it does look like it was just transitioned from one column into another until the explanation about them adding utilities. It does look like that, I understand why you feel that way. Cause, you know, on the paper, with your math and your explanation, I understand why that's, why you feel that way. But does their explanation about adding the, the utility infrastructure to the property value, which I believe is a decision that was made by the Board of Equalization that year to, to do that? No? By the assessor's office?
My problem with that part is, you did, they weren't taking in consideration the aging condition of the sewer. Mine has to be pumped three or four times a year because of the water level. It's old, it was put in clear back in the 50s, but they're using a brand-new price, yes. If I ever have to replace that sewer, it's gonna cost me $10,000 or more.
Easy, easy.
But I don't have that on my property. And hopefully I'll never have to. My well was drilled clear back in the 40s, so it's a really old well. It's not a submersible, it just has a salt pump. Its value is nothing compared to what a new one would cost, but they're using new cost value to charge me. And I just don't, I don't think that's right.
The unfortunate part about that is knowing the years of every single person's well would be absolutely impossible. We would spend years trying to figure that out and then depreciating it and that kind of thing. This is why we did it this way, and it was also with guidance from the appraisal staff, from Vanguard. So, that's, that's an unfortunate situation, we would never know what everybody's, unless, I mean, brand-new houses obviously, you'll know those ages, but everything else you just have to guess.
Okay, is there, is there anything we can do to make it an adjustment that would be legitimized by what you've heard today?
Not on the land.
And, and remain. Not on the land. And remain in equalization.
Not on the land. That, that land is very difficult, if you're gonna make any adjustments to land, there has to have be some sort of reason. Um, you know, a, a size adjustment or a topography adjustment, you know, something of that nature.
How about landlocked, as he's mentioned?
It's not landlocked, though.
It, cause it abuts.
Because he has access to those acres.
He does, but to his point, if he, if he didn't wanna pay taxes on that east half, how would you get?
The way you sell it.
How would you sell it to anybody?
Well, that would go to the same thing as Hibner's the other day, that one, that would be landlocked. We have to do something with that.
Anybody that has back acres like that all have the same situation, so how are we supposed to adjust for every single?
I don't know, I don't know, but this has come up repetitively.
Let me, let me address that.
Okay, go ahead.
We have talked about that before, because we have talked about, uh, you, there's a terminology for the shape of the lot, if it's not buildable or something, we've looked at that, so there is an adjustment. I don't remember what it's called, Charity, help me out, but.
And being unbuildable?
Yeah, that kind of.
Undevelopable?
Yeah, something.
We had one last year, that very same thing, cause it was too thin to do anything with.
There you go.
Well, I wouldn't say this is too thin to develop.
If you, if you notice, there is a natural gas easement that crosses that property right through the middle.
Correct.
And there's no way to put, as far as future sewer development or anything else.
Not with the gas. Not, not from the frontage side, right?
Big part.
Not from the frontage side, you couldn't do anything from 83 into it.
No.
Because of that, if they're not gonna let you.
Natural gas easement.
Yeah, I, I understand, I, I am totally sympathizing with that. I, in fact, didn't, didn't we have this, or we had another property that did this two or three years ago, talked about the same thing. Landlocked, and they had a gas line, utility, across their lots. Maybe it was your job.
I don't think it was mine.
But it's almost, it's eerily identical to this, and I get that, I don't, but I don't know how we, I think there should be a remedy, but I don't know what the answer is.
Find out what it is, cause I got one up in Indian Hills that's got a, seems really useless.
There's a lot of gas lines that run, there are a lot of properties that we're unaware of, that use those adjustments.
But essentially, that lot's never gonna get any smaller. Even if you wanted to get rid of the taxable acre.
No, you, you could, even, if we go there, you could go there with an ag land, a section, maybe. I wanna sell my northwest quarter, but it's gonna be landlocked if I do it.
Right.
Then, you know what, I mean.
And that's what Dallas is saying, is, I can't, it's not marketable at all.
But I mean, a lot of people say that, for large sections of ground. There's a lot of stuff landlocked, if you wanted to split.
This is 16.
A row here.
Uh, 7.97. 7.97.
Did you hear me?
Was that, Charity?
South, you're the 61,955, you'd have the same situation.
We're gonna have several of them like that.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna have thousands across the county that are gonna be like that. You start adjusting for that, and I think you're gonna open a can of worms.
The only, the, that was the reason I talked about equalization, but, you know, I, I think this is a good conversation right now, I mean.
There is a driveway from, to that house just behind there too, that you could easily get an easement into that back section.
An easement, you mean?
Yeah.
Can we talk about?
Well, we, we, we say you can, but, uh, not necessarily, because right now he's not landlocked. So in order to get it, I, I'm not an attorney, so don't, don't pull me to this. But, but you, that would have to be worked out between neighbor A and neighbor B. Been involved in those, sometimes neighbor A doesn't like neighbor B, and I'll be damned if you're ever getting an easement across my property. I'm not saying that's the case here, but, you know.
I tried to put a gate and a fence between us, and they wouldn't even let me put a gate in there, so.
So that's probably not an option.
Not an option.
Question regarding the dwelling value and the outbuilding value. That go up due to the 2020?
Manual.
Three year cost estimate table?
Yep. As far as I know, I don't see any of those, anything provided evidence why it's to.
24,000, 29,000. So, just for your understanding there, um, we were using costing tables from 2010 on the building materials costs, what it would take to construct that, that dwelling, okay? We just got updated costing tables, and that's, we have to have these, these costing tables current by state statute. Um, and the new costing tables that we're implementing countywide, they take into account the inflationary spike that occurred, uh, and what everybody's having to deal with. So that's where the increase has come from.
On everybody.
On everybody. Um, I was just clarifying that that's, is that the only reason for the increase? Or is there, or sales are incorporated?
Well, that helped us get back.
That made us, we, you know, just updating those cost tables to the 2020 allowed us to come back into compliance.
So we were out of compliance with this property?
We were out of compliance.
Yes, we were out of compliance with those.
Where, where would we add as far as the percentage of value?
Let me check out the sheet here somewhere. We have it on here, don't we, Charity?
Yeah.
Could, could somebody pull up the dwelling, just curiosity?
Yeah. I'll, if you find that on their form.
So suburban residential parcels, which is what his would be classified as, was at 81.77 before the change, and now we're at 96.34.
How's that? And then I'm gonna.
96. And what's the range that we need?
92 to 100.
Get into some older photos.
I don't remember for sure.
Repeated.
The only thing that's in compliance still is the north side, for 2024.
Well, Dallas, it looks like we, uh, we're in a rock and roll heart spot here.
Yes, sir. That's why I'm here. But I do appreciate your time.
We've went past the time we allowed for these protests, but there was a good reason why we went by. There's a lot of discussion, things we had to touch upon. But I will give you, let, let's have another minute or two, and if there's something conditional that we haven't discussed so far, please, please bring it to our attention.
Yeah, I really don't, I don't have anything else.
Questions from this board?
I don't have a question, but I, you know, can of worms or not, I, I've never liked this, that there's no differentiation on some of these properties where, well, you're landlocked, that's your problem. I know school, I know pastures that are landlocked, and neighbors don't give an easement. It impacts the value of the pasture, I guarantee you. Cause only certain people are gonna be able to rent or buy that and get to it, so. It's, it's problematic in my mind, I can't fix it right now.
The unfortunate part is, he does have access to those acres, though. It would be different if it was landlocked in the regard that somebody's not allowing him across their property to get to theirs. He does have access to those acres.
I know, I understand, but he can't divest himself of it because he couldn't even, he couldn't even stop paying taxes on it unless you have it. Cause it's tied to these, to the 7.97 acres. Cause I'd say.
So we should just assess just where the house is on everybody's property?
Charity, I made my point. I made my point. If you wanna argue, we can argue it after the meeting, but I, I don't think it's a fair and equitable system. Because that's got no upside and no development value for various, for obvious reasons, because of the pipeline, but anyway.
Dallas, if you, if you decided you wanted to sell the backside of your property, you could give them access through your, the front of your property, right? There's enough room?
No, I can't, not to make it legal, though. I can't separate it because I have to put it in a county road, and there's not enough room there to put any county road.
But you could, you could give them access.
If I lived there, yeah. But what if I sell?
Then it's grandfathered in, cause we have that, we have that situation in my neighborhood. And it was grandfathered in.
It'd have to be through a formal easement that would be tied to the deed.
Tied to the deed. Zooming in room.
Can you even subdivide it, a parcel that's less than 10 acres?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
You can go down to three, I think.
Three.
Well, I've seen, I've seen one acre pieces be divided.
But it, but he could, he could put it, attach a permanent easement to his property, so that ruins it. But that's another point, so it could be done.
It could be done.
I, I, I have questions about the, the condition, because I've seen the property, I've been out to the property, full disclosure, I mean, I, I've been out there fairly regularly. Julie does a great job of keeping our, our dwellings, the assessments at the lower end of the, uh, the spectrum. This one's at 96%.
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle. Um, and by no means, do not take offense to, to what I'm getting ready to say, but we have other, other properties that have far greater, far better condition that are at lower ends of that, that variance that we're authorized. I'm just curious if, if there's any consideration we may be able to provide in that regard. Just for conversation's sake.
Conversation, I would say.
I, I might add that the original part of that house was a basement house that we invented. And it floods every year, not a sewer, a subsystem in there that works fairly well, but it still fills with water. The whole basement level, it, it's only half basement, but it, I mean, it's useless for anything.
How old is the kitchen?
The kitchen probably was built in 19, I believe, 1958. Then there was another addition built on the back in the late 60s. There was two bedrooms and a bathroom added at like 68 or 69.
Any updates to the, to the house?
I, I did put in central air.
But as far as finishes and, and the.
The additional.
We have the test one next year, if that's all it takes.
I was just gonna, can you pull that up? No.
Pull it up.
Do we have the sketch in there?
Do you have it on your, that P D F?
Is this the same sketch you're looking at?
Yep. You can see the rectangle part, that's probably the original. And that has basement under it. And then the other would be addition. And then there's attached garage.
What condition did you have the residents in?
Very good.
Very good?
Off that topic, Dallas, do you feel like when you filled out the veteran paperwork that you said just quit coming to you, that you, you were getting a break because of that status also?
No, I don't think it made any difference, once I was old enough to, well, I'm 71 now.
Oh, so you're getting the homestead exemption, okay. Cause I was gonna suggest that you go over and talk to Tom Gann.
Because I was getting the difference.
Okay, okay.
It doesn't make any difference in the amount.
Okay. I was gonna send you over to Tom Gann and see if there's anything in the veterans' office. Okay, he's doing a wonderful job.
Mary Wethers, we're gonna see what we can come up with here. We're running over, so I hope you didn't have another appointment.
I'm sorry to hold you up.
We wanna get it right.
Yeah.
We wanna get it right.
We don't wanna raise it.
That's fine, thank you. I'm back for it. What'd you come up with, Henry? Any, anything we can adjust?
If we had pictures.
They, they already made the adjustment I was gonna ask about, that's different years on the addition of stuff, they've already have them down at the lower, the older portion, so it can't. This, I didn't mention this previously, but this protest did go to the referee. You did meet with the referee?
Yes.
The referee agrees with the county assessor's recommendation. Anything else from our board here?
I, I just wanna make the point, I, I understand and empathize with your frustration about, especially not having all the information, as Commissioner Ruler was pointing out, what seemed like just valuation shift. But the county assessor and the Board of Equalization are bound by state statute 77-1330. They have very specific rules. And I, I promise you, there was nothing nefarious done as far as shifting valuation uh, to try to collect more money, uh, based off of homestead. I, I promise you that. Um, the issue that we're, we're running into is, I mean, they're, they're following the, the rules, regulations and directives as outlined by the state statute, and this is the valuation that they're coming up with. And when we have a third-party referee that is reviewing all of it and agreeing with that, the, the methods and, and the outcome, it's very hard for us, for us to deviate from that. And if we deviate out of those rules, regulations and directives.
I guess I'm confused, didn't Charity just tell us, all of us, that that was a local decision made? That had nothing to do with state statute?
That was, the 2020 was the adding of, um, utilities as an improvement to the land, okay? And, and calculating for that aspect.
Is that part of the state statute?
State statute requires that we do that uniformly, fairly, and equalized across the county. And so that decision was made, and they're being done across the county. And so if we deviate or make a variation for a localized one specific property, and, and not for absolutely everybody, um, then we fall out of that regulation. And so where that was put into place, and it's been utilized, precedent has been set for the past few years, we run into major issues if we, if we change, uh, the valuation on that, okay?
I, I am gonna speak to the fact that it was a local decision to do that, because we had, like Charity also explained, we hadn't reviewed and done rural residential or suburban residential land lot values for years and years and years. We had fell out of compliance, and one of the ways to get back into compliance is to increase that land value. You know, that also, and helps, you know, get us back into compliance. get us back into compliance, if we're way too low on land, we had the vacant lots, land sales, you know, that showed we were too low. So, you know, those sales showed we need to make that adjustment to the land values as well. So that local decision to do that was on our part, but it was on part because we were out of compliance by state statute, so we had to do that to come into compliance with state statute.
And I did notice that the time that I protested, you used comparison properties that were in areas that can and have been since then, taken either into the city or they have city sewer, city water, nothing's ever going to go north of that North Platte River because it's not possible. So the land that lays north of that river, to me, you can't compare that with land values in the south.
I'm, I'm gonna correct you on that, because we're going through our comp plan right now, and that is absolutely a major part of our discussions on the annexation plans with the city of North Platte moving northbound. It is possible, it's just there's infrastructure needs to be, that, infrastructure that needs to be put in place in order to make it more viable as an option. But those conversations are being had, it's not, it's not, it will never happen, it will happen, it's just a matter of when.
Probably not in my life.
I don't know.
Not in one big property, charity.
Dallas.
And Dallas, just so you understand, if the assessor's office doesn't take preemptive proactive measures and they fall out of compliance for a period of time and the state comes down here and does those adjustments for us, they're going to take it to the hundred percent, because they're not going to want to come back in two years and do that again. So Julie taking the initiative and doing that for our county keeps the state out of it. It, it's, it's what's good for us.
Chris, you might also explain another option that Dallas would have, and that would be with Turk.
So, yes, and if you don't agree with whatever this Board of Equalization may come to as far as a decision here today.
I understand, I've done that before.
Okay.
Okay, you went through dark.
Yes, I know, I know how.
Okay, good, how did you like that exercise?
Well aware of it.
Mr. Chairman, I know fifteen minutes is going over, we're at fifty minutes, so.
Okay, any other comments from this board?
Good discussion, I learn something every time we have these conversations.
Okay, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change, so what will be entered into the record is land valued at, appraised at, valued at sixty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Buildings, one hundred and fifty-four thousand a hundred dollars for a total of two hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. That is my motion, notify.
Is that number ten?
Five. Oh, oh, five because of assessor and referee.
Okay, alright.
Well, second, before you call or vote, I'll just say for the record that I'm frustrated that I don't see any wiggle room on this.
That's all, I've said enough, thank you.
I'd like to make one more comment, too, before you do it, I guess for future, it makes it really hard for, especially the referee, but also my staff, too. Our hands are pretty tied to, because we're equalized on the land, but there is room to make those adjustments on your homes or outbuildings, but we need photos. You know, you have to provide, say you got. Photos for evidence in, bring them to Marsha, you know, the referee, if we have any of those photos, that allows us, and even the board.
Nine times out of ten, you don't even need to go through the referee process, if you bring that evidence in and just have the conversation with the assessor.
Yeah, bring those to us, and then that allows us to make that, okay?
Well, you do, and, and you don't even have to wait till protest time, if you have something that's appropriate or something, get it to us so we can have it on the record.
Thank you for coming in, Dallas.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dallas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have the second.
Williams?
Aye.
Bren?
Aye.
Cutley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Hi, under protest.
Dealing with the legal issue.
Okay, good, good, we got that one taken care of, are we ready to?
Thanks for waiting for Chris.
Do we want to go through one?
If you want me to.
Henry, you want me to go ahead with the next?
Do we want to discuss? You want to go right into Walmart?
Let's do it, get it over with, okay.
Because it's all I'm, you guys needed to call or talk to him, we didn't call him, so.
Okay. Okay, this is protest number three-nine-zero. The name I have on here is a Benji Tompkins, representing Walmart. Address I have on here is Bentonville, Arkansas, but obviously this is property at fourteen oh one South Dewey. The identification number is one zero five one six. Legal description is Gerald Drewer, second edition, part of lot seven and four thirteen dash thirty. And debenture is subdivision lot two, block two, this is twenty point nine seven two acres. Again, fourteen oh one South Dewey. They are protesting the land valuation of twenty-two, no, two million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand eighty, eighty-two dollars. Buildings of eleven million, three hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars, for a total of thirteen million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. They are requesting an aggregate, the total of land and buildings of ten million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Reason for the request is market and relevant property data suggests property is over assessed.
Are we talking about the distribution center?
No, this is the store.
This is Walmart.
Walmart store.
Is this just looking beyond it to the apartments or something?
There's, there's storage units behind it.
That is the store, it's just so big that you had to stand clear back.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I think those cream colored units, the storage units are behind the store.
They're containers that we deliver to outback.
Okay, so this did not go to referee. And Henry, you and Charity worked on this, would you like to speak, you have the authority to speak on behalf of the owners, correct? You have spoken with them?
I, I talked to Benji, yeah, this morning, and before I talked to him, I went and I pulled several.
But you're not speaking?
No, I'm not speaking for him.
Thank you.
He asked me to present this to you.
That was a misstatement on my.
And if we need to call him, he said we can call him.
Sure.
So, because he won't be in Nebraska until next Tuesday, is what he told me, he's in Arkansas today. So what I did this morning when I got here, I run, went through several counties, Grand Island, Hastings, Scotts Bluff, Sidney, Ovalalla, Lexington, Carney, and, and pulled what they have on Walmart, and basically over all, they're right around that ten million to a little more. And what Charity and I did, we put an adjustment on it, we're at eleven thousand, four forty-two, one seventy-six. And when I talked to Benji, he was.
Eleven million.
Eleven million, did I say eleven thousand?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's good to be Walmart.
But when I talked to Benji this morning, basically, he asked me to present, to see if you guys would go to fifty-five a square foot, we're at fifty-seven and a few cents, is where we're at with this number. But he wanted me to ask you if you guys would go down to fifty-five, because he needs to make his budget work. That's basically what he told me, he wants to get it down for his budget.
Is that a new premise for protest?
I don't, I guess I'll tell you guys.
All the rules.
I mean, we, we put a twenty-five percent adjustment on it, so we've, and he realizes we hit it pretty hard, and he says he's not gonna quiver over two dollars a square foot.
Okay.
So I would assume he would not.
What, what comments I have here is from view folks, is you've changed the condition to normal. Gave all improvements twenty-five thou, twenty-five percent functional depreciation for super adequacy, explain that to me.
That's what we did.
It's because it's such a large building, there's very few occupancies that are going to go in there if Walmart were to leave. So, I mean, Hy Lee could probably go in there, but you're not going to see, you know.
Serious, huh?
Right, there's, there's very few things that are going to go in there that's going to fill two hundred thousand square feet, you just don't see that, you know what I mean? And so, so it, it limits your buyers, so to speak, so it also limits your market value when it comes to that.
And they probably put a restriction on who could move into on top of that, if it was sold.
Have a non-compete somehow.
Because that was in Lexington, nobody like ShopCo or any of those could move into the building when they built a new Walmart.
So they do cause a restriction, and therefore we're supposed to factor that into the value?
We're not necessarily factoring that in with the super adequacy, we're just factoring in the fact that it's such a large thing that it limits your buyers.
I would say I almost bet it differed, because I think that you could, you could, look what we're doing with them, I mean, they're completely reconfiguring the in, interior walls and everything for that.
And they're also spending a very large amount of money to do that.
I understand that, but there are developers across the country that could do that, it's a different type of market, but it is still a large market.
What we're looking at more so is equalization across the state, we're looking at, you know, other Walmarts in the state.
And that was going to be my question, how do we compare to like the Lexington and the Grand Island and Carney's?
I'd say look at Carney, Grand Island, those are even.
Okay. Here's one in Hall County.
That, what's, come on, ask me.
They've got two, yeah, they've got two, their, one is currently at fifteen million, eight twenty-three, eight twenty-one.
And that's the one that's north of town.
How many square foot?
And where are we?
What they are.
Right now?
Where they are right now at thirteen million, they, with the adjustments made, they are proposing eleven million.
Thank you.
Okay.
And change.
Okay, this would be their other Walmart, they're at nine million, one ninety-seven, nine seventy-eight.
Square footies difference on those?
Square foot.
This one's about five thousand square foot more than ours, plus they have the, there's an extra retail store on here, which I'm not sure what that would be for.
Okay, the one that was nine million, how many square foot?
Two thousand and five. What's that?
The nine million one that was quoted, what's the square foot?
Ours is built in.
That one is two hun, two thousand, two hundred and five thousand also, ours is only two hundred thousand square foot.
Yeah, I think I got one coming.
Built nineteen ninety-nine, he's a little newer, two thousand and five, what was this one? Two thousand and four and two thousand and five.
This is Adams County, so this would be Hastings, they're at, one piece of eleven million, six thirty, six eighty-six. And then I think they have another, some vacant land at three million, two fifteen, six twenty-seven. That one, all we could get was the values, did you find that one?
And you guys have already worked with them and adjusted down?
Yeah, with this morning, yeah, I told them Mark, we put our adjustment on.
Okay.
We were at what, thirteen million?
And you dropped it to eleven?
We were at thirteen.
Protested was thirteen million.
Okay, this would be.
I don't mind dropping, I just don't like the reasoning.
Right. I feel like we've already worked on quite a bit.
Fremont? Yeah, that one, I didn't really go on either, okay, Fremont's at ten million, four sixty-one, one sixty-six.
And, and these are all the same square footed buildings, they're, they're not.
Fair enough, they vary.
When ours was constructed, it was the largest in the country and the nicest in the country, and it was built after Grand Island's.
This one was, ours was ninety-nine.
There was, Grand Island was after, there was two thousand and five.
The second Grand Island.
Two thousand and four and two thousand and five were both Grand Islands.
Oh. Is what they're showing, yeah.
They must have replaced a, a building now.
This one's just a little under two, two hundred square foot, one hundred ninety-three thousand square foot, that was the Fremont one, I think you said.
And, and what's that one valued at?
Ten million, four hundred sixty-one.
New that, that's twenty-two.
Now it's built in nineteen ninety-five, so this one's a little bit older than ours.
Is that twenty-two, so, so they reverse the median on this one?
That'd be the twenty-three, that'd be.
I mean, I feel like they've already made a pretty good adjustment to it, if they went from thirteen million down to eleven million.
I don't even see the, the one for that one.
I don't either. Columbus? Theirs is a ten million, five eighty-seven, five fifteen.
Super adequacy.
Those are their communities.
They've got two hundred twenty-two thousand.
This is a unique, special problem. And so I hear it doesn't fit my budget.
You have construction on that one, Henry?
When it was built?
Is that, oh, it's just that part.
Henry, Henry said that at the beginning.
Two thousand and four.
I feel like, I feel like we've worked with them.
This is the one in Sydney.
Without our intervention.
They're only at five million, three seventy-six, two forty-four. And theirs, where the.
That is remaining with conrespect to.
They're half the size, one hundred and six thousand square foot.
That must not be a super.
And that's two thousand and three.
I hope so.
I don't know if it was or not.
I think it's just like, Ovalalla's.
Henry, what was the fits the budget comment again?
He basically said he just needed to get it to fifty-five a square, to fit his budget, that's the point.
Was he joking or?
Not, that I was aware of, but he told me he's not going to fiddle over two dollars a square foot, is what he told me, I mean, he's not gonna take us to Turk or anything, from what I, my feeling is what I got from him. Because he said I ain't gonna argue over, spend a lot of time.
So he's not gonna argue over thirteen million dollars, or he's not gonna argue over eleven oh four?
Eleven oh four.
But thirteen he is?
Yeah.
I think, I think, I guess my interpretation of that is he wasn't gonna argue over eleven million.
That, that's what I got, that's what I.
You guys have already worked with him, yeah, so that's mine.
Because he said two dollars a square foot, I'm not gonna spend.
But the, but the underlying argument was he needs to get it to fit his budget.
Fifty-five, fifty-five.
So it's dealing with a budget, it's not dealing with the condition or the value of the property.
So do we want to give him a call?
Well, let's, let's talk about this a little further, though, let's talk about two different things. Let's talk about number one, when we get into large properties like this, in the past, we've had somebody come in and help us sometimes, you know, and we, we used to do our commercial way to have Joe Blow come around, do the big things, because when, when it comes for our people to try to compare, they do just like they do here, because you can't go to North Platte and find another comparable. So we go outside the market, so what they're doing is, is sort of giving us, in my opinion, a heads up if we were to have it appealed or, you know, this is probably what would happen, we'd go here and say this building, because it's, those are comps, we just, we can't find comps locally, so I think that what they're making is a somewhat important issue, I'm, I'm very, very troubled at the reason given for getting to this point. I mean, I'm beyond that, but I'm, I'm not gonna say how I really feel about it, but.
And there is a list of other sales that they sent in, and they go from Nebraska up to Minnesota.
And, but, but these, these are appropriate, so these are Nebraska.
These are Nebraska, right.
So, we, we toss, we toss out the non-super Walmart, and that's half price because it's half the square footage, so so I, I think what we're listening to is probably good for us to listen to.
I did have Holt County contacted us this year, we had a, I think, a nursing home that sold or assisted living, and they wanted our property record card because they had someone in their county protest and that they didn't have any sales, so, I mean, it's not unusual for counties to contact other counties for these type of sales when you have that, you know, one facility, unique property in your county.
Well, we went through with the mall last time, before they sold out, same thing, we had to go.
So Henry, had two or three more? You had two or three more?
Yeah, I got some more, this is one in Lexington, it was built in two thousand and three, it's square foot, okay, it's got five sixty, approximately one hundred and seventy square foot, and they've got it at seven million, five fifty-eight, one fifteen.
Okay, eighty-five percent, eighty-three percent of the size of ours, okay.
Buffalo County, Carney, theirs was.
That's one out north, it's newer? That's one out north, it's newer?
This one, I'll find out. No, they haven't got an address on this one. Yeah, I think there's.
And also the one you'd mentioned in Grand Island, Julie?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know which one you looked at, Grand Island, but you know, the one out on South Locust, that is a new facility.
That one still says two thousand and five.
I'd.
Which I thought.
I find, I find that surprising because I did a project out there, I've done a lot of them out there, I'm working there right now and I thought it was older than that, but I'm sure.
Yeah, they said it's more in time, they're both for the Grand Island, one was two thousand and four, one was two thousand and five, I think you questioned one.
Right.
Yeah.
I wonder if they didn't like either demo or build around an older one on Locust?
No, it's brand new, totally new ground out next to the apartments.
Yeah, they say two thousand and four.
Because a person I would work with, two different people.
I mean, I feel like it's newer.
Fifty-five.
I'm sure.
Seven hundred.
Yeah, their year built says two thousand and four, two thousand and five, it just doesn't seem like it's been there that long.
Hundred and sixty-six, six oh two.
I don't think.
And twenty-six twenty-five.
See how the older way, just be out north, this one's south.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the Locust, that's what your build it says on here.
Okay, the one in Carney, um, it's got a hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven square foot, um, and they've done some additions, the original was nineteen ninety-five. And they've got, uh, eleven million, one hundred forty-seven, thirty-five.
So probably about where we're at, at the thirteen, because that is ninety-five percent of the size of ours.
Yeah, then they got a little piece of ground for two hours.
Little older and stuff and smaller piece of ground, okay.
And what was that valued?
What was the value?
Eleven million, one forty. So about where we're at after you guys adjusted it this morning?
No, before they adjusted.
Before we, yeah.
Because you gotta.
We're at eleven million now.
Yeah, but we're bigger and we have more land than they have.
Oh, I see, I see.
Yeah. Okay, Oglala's, let's see.
Real Italian additions.
They've got, it's a two thousand and fourteen.
Smaller.
And.
By far.
Yeah, sixty-nine thousand, eight sixty-six. They've got it at five million, three forty-one, one ninety-five.
Thirty-five percent of the square foot, how much?
Sherry, question for you.
Uh, sixty-nine, eight, sixty-six.
All improvements, twenty-five percent functional depreciation.
And then they own another little piece, Joe, that they got.
Based on what?
So, I looked at the distribution center, um, that one is the hundred, over eight hundred thousand square feet.
I don't feel it, I'm not.
That one is the hundred.
Walmart bus trust.
We actually have a seventy-five percent functional on it for super adequacy.
Because of what it could be used for if it's not used for its present purpose.
God forbid they leave, I have no idea what we're doing.
Another major distribution center, I mean.
I mean, that'd be the only other thing that could, yes.
I mean, I, I agree that it's a unique facility and, and I think, um, I appreciate Walmart being there. They employ a lot of my friends and neighbors, um, I appreciate all that. And I do think it would be a struggle for us to find somebody to go in there.
I think.
I, I really do.
So, just an understanding of the market for large structures, five hundred thousand square feet and up, they sell like hotcakes. It's, you have more trouble with buildings smaller than that.
Because, because they're, it, they don't exist.
Okay, fair enough.
Which, which by the way, wasn't always the case.
Wasn't always the case, but it is absolutely the case in the market and these days when it comes to economic development. We have so many, uh, prospective developers wanting to find a new location to develop and move into a community, invest in that community, but they're looking for that size of square footage of a building, five hundred thousand or greater. And we've lost out on so many because we don't have one.
Okay, I s- I sense that we've got a couple of, maybe even five different opinions on this. Maybe six, I don't know. But, uh, we had, the assessor's office has applied to twenty-five percent functional depreciation. Which has lowered this evaluation about two million dollars. Is there any reason why we have to go to twenty-five percent functional depreciation, can we lessen that amount?
So that was a ten percent reduction, right?
Approximately, yeah.
I, you know, I, I don't even know what I was talking about, ten percent, the reason, no, not a ten percent, a ten dollars a square foot, that's what I meant to say, ten dollars a square foot. And they wanted twelve, is what we're saying, basically.
For budgetary purposes.
For budgetary purposes. So I just wanted to understand that, okay, I, 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 I'm with you, okay, thank you.
I mean, isn't that pretty much why everybody's come in here and asked for a reduction, is for budgetary purposes, right? I feel like.
And I haven't set up a square foot to find out what all these.
But, but hopefully we have a grantor to on that, on that reset.
That would be better, no, I mean, that would be outside of.
I, I think as a homeowner, that's the bottom line though, is.
Well, that's because there's a, a, an oftentimes found misunderstanding of people thinking that their property valuations are their, are their property taxes.
Correct.
It's only one aspect of the equation.
It's only one part of that equation, you know?
So when you take into what they may realize, they may actually see property taxes go down.
They could.
We don't, we don't know yet, because liberties haven't been set.
Okay, we've, uh, spent quite a few minutes on this.
I'd just like to say one thing before we vote. We need to have a sound reason for. We need to have a sound reason for whatever number we come up with, we can't come up with a number, it's because it's kind of in between, we like it, that's called arbitrary and capricious. I am going to ask the. John is spot, and I don't remember ever doing this, I'm gonna ask the assessor's office, when they gave the twenty-five percent functional. I'd like to know your reasoning why you came up with twenty-five percent, uh, because a lot of times a functional depreciation is when we can't, well, you, you know, the supersize is one thing, we've, we've done that at many times, whatever, whatever you call it, it's not that, but, you know, it's because of the uniqueness, that's, that's, I get that. But what, give me the justifications for going with that, uh, twenty-five percent versus twenty fifteen or something else, tell me how we, how, what the thought process, so I can better understand.
The unfortunate part is I don't have sales to actually deduce what number to use.
Right.
Um, so. I basically felt, okay, it, it's gonna reduce the number of buyers, is, is how I felt about that.
Sure.
Um, it, maybe it's a little arbitrary.
Sure, and I understand, I understand.
I'm gonna admit that, but I, I just.
And we don't have sales, so I, I, I get that.
And the forms of the, the original valuation was determined by what costing?
The cost of a piece.
Okay.
And that was before, that was before our updated cost tables, we did commercials, so those did not get redone with the new cost tables yet. So when we redid it, when we did cost tables, it was actually at fifteen million.
And he does realize that we're on Vanguard, because when I said, you're in Nebraska, okay, yeah, you're on Vanguard, we're not, he's a Marshall's way. Which is, he sent me this afterwards.
Is this Marshall's?
This is figured off their estimator.
But is that Marshall?
But it can, yeah, yeah, Marshall's estimator. And.
Tell me what I have.
They don't match necessarily, the square foot on the parking lot he figured is off. You're seeing, he puts in a grade, so this is an estimator, uh, snapshot from a different program that they utilize for other properties. Yeah. Yep. Absolutely. Right.
So what I've got.
And I only made one, I should've made one for all of you.
The, the basic, the basic structure cost would be, total new cost would be thirteen million.
Yeah, he's.
A hundred and eleven thousand.
Depends up with the total value.
Seven million.
Seven million is his total value.
The big difference between that and ours is he's given twice as much depreciation as what we are. And I don't know if it's straight line depreciation, I don't know where he come up with that amount.
Or if it's just, uh.
Well, and this is, this is the protester?
Yes.
So he, I mean, he's.
Well, yeah, and it might be just the program, yeah, he just typed in.
Cause that's actually an estimator program, that you just put the numbers in and tell it what you want to price it out of.
And give your.
And I mean, it's not.
It will calculate it for.
And you can fiddle, fiddle and move the levers to get the outcome.
Honestly, I don't know that I'd refuse it.
Watch out, didn't, yeah, we'll record there, she's roping you.
Yes, she is.
Okay, um, I would like to move on if we think we can.
So we were fifteen million before.
Thirteen million.
Thirteen.
Million, five hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
With the updated cost tables, it's actually pricing out of fifteen million.
But we're not using the updated.
That's what I wanted her to say for the record.
With the new adjustments, we have to, to take that twenty-five percent off, I have to.
Have to what?
Go to the updated cost, I can't go back to my old manual and use that, because I have my new manual.
Twenty twenty-three is using twenty-ten cost tables.
It is, that thirteen million, but when I put it into the new, new system.
In order to try to add some functional depreciation, you have to use the twenty-twenty-three, which is why there's a twenty-five percent functional depreciation. And that number seems big, so that you can get that number down.
And that's where your final number came up to the eleven million and change, okay, okay.
Anything, any other questions, comments from this board?
I'm not com- I'm not confident, I am comfortable with it, I'm for somewhat of a creep, capricious, and I think backlog, that's why Turk's there. When we, when we don't know, if we don't know, and I honestly don't know myself if I'm comfortable with that reduction, so. Henry hit the button.
It's Henry's fault.
No, I hit the green one.
Oh, that's all, I thought we had a red one.
He unplugged it when he.
Okay, what do you think, folks?
No, no referee on this.
No referee.
For me personally, I'm comfortable taking the recommendation of the assessors.
Well, we're gonna see what happens then.
I don't know if it matters, I did look on LoopNet just to see what large, large facilities we're selling for, um, there's only four in Nebraska. Well, one of them's a, the mobile home park here in town, so I wouldn't really count that, so three. Um, one's an industrial building, that's three hundred and seventy-six thousand square feet, it's for sale for three hundred, or three million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, but it's like a indoor RV display.
You know, I think those, I, that's just confusing us.
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's Apples and Cadillac Eldorados nineteen forty-six D.
I'll show, I know.
But we did provide just some of these other, uh, Walmart figures, so that's kind of where we're looking at too.
Okay, uh, my motion is going to be, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation of the assessor's recommendation, which would be land at two million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars. Improvements, nine million, one hundred seventy-five thousand doll- and ninety-four dollars. Total then would be eleven million, four hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars, be number seven.
I will second.
Before we vote, I'd like to also make a comment, city of North Platte is looking at updating some of their planning and zoning codes so that the Walmarts of the world don't have to have such large parking lot, that they donate half of their parking lot to other entities and truck parking for the evening, because once you get to a certain point, it, it just doesn't make any sense. So they're, they're looking at that for future development step, I confused it, I'm ready to vote.
Winks?
No.
Grant?
No.
Keely?
Yes.
Luler?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes. I'm glad to see that vote, I'm glad to see us not all agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree to disagree.
I agree to disagree as well, thank you, everyone.
Good, good conversation.
You ready for another one?
Okay, let's move on to something else, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that'll take us an hour and twenty minutes to get through those two.
Okay, let's rock and roll. Protest three, three, three. Parcel four, three, five, two, I don't know where the decimal point might be, four, three, five, two, zero, four, three, five, two, zero. Otherwise described as town lots, uh.
Sorry, can't, is that, we've already done that, Doug crossed.
I'll, I'll come, I don't have any, I don't, I just initialled it just now, literally.
We did that one yesterday.
Where is it, show it to me, why do I have this? I never wrote any numbers in yet because we hadn't voted on it.
I don't know if they have duplicate ones, I don't, that I don't know, that's the second one.
I had one like that this morning.
Yeah, I know you did, but this is, I guarantee you.
I'm staying out of this.
That was around for a while.
Yeah.
This is the original.
What's the value on it?
Chairman.
What's the value on, um, Ashley says no change, fifty-seven, ninety-eight on land.
You hash it out, I'll go find yesterday's, sound good?
Okay.
Is that all right? What's the overall, the total?
The total's nineteen thousand, three eighty-three.
Okay, that's right. But we did this one yesterday.
Well, I, I'm confused why we have duplications, this has got the original signature for the.
Because I think Chris did it yesterday, cause I think he asked me about it.
Did he sign, he must not have signed it, cause it was blank when I got it out of this thing.
Oh, that's why he left.
Oh, 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 oh.
He knew.
Yeah.
Cause I, I did take the liberty of putting what I thought would be the motion number in my initials, but I do always wait, typically tell you to vote.
Right, that's how I know I'm done.
That's how I know it hasn't been worked.
Me too.
That, and I'm, I'm guilty of not doing that, cause I'm gonna end up with a spot, bunch of men might have to read in, so.
I know there's been some confusion down on the other end, new.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, it's, it's a learning curve, I get that. You gotta, you gotta do it to figure it out, takes some time, there's a lot to do.
Well, let's, Jody, you have one to work on?
Sure, can't really work it, cause clerk's.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, well, we're taking a break now.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get, get rid of this.
It's like taking advantage of this thing.
No, it should be thirteen, five eighty-five. I wonder if you would have talked about that.
I thought she was a customer.
I can't go out that door.
I thought you were a customer, a defiant customer, and I was gonna go tackle you, cause I haven't had enough excitement, oh, Neil was gonna get you.
So I was the honorary right there.
I used to go out those doors fifteen years ago. This is a copy, but this is the original, cause I remember it being on paper. When Chris comes back, I betcha he will. Recognize it from Instagram.
Well, you suppose we've got duplicates. Good. But it's something that can be remedied. Perfect, I'll sell it in that way.
Come here, I, I got it over here for you, sir, I got this givey.
Okay. So this is the one I had.
Oh, I got it, okay, so what do we do, what do I do with this, seriously, do I just put it?
We have a guy doing one with it, so just.
Give her back there.
We brought the other one back, yeah, but he didn't do anything today, so we don't have to do nothing with it.
I just talked to Benji, he says he appreciates what you did in the morning, and he says he likes working with Nebraska, and at least there's the craters to work with. Or he said sometimes it's just they go in and use the assessors no matter what.
Really?
He appreciates.
Nice.
Cause I've seen us going no further.
I mean, you can't blame him for asking.
Then we'll try it over then.
So, no, but what do I do with this?
Is that a paperclip?
I, I. I usually give them, I usually give them back to, uh.
Here's one, can't.
To Becky. Okay, here you go, this is one you did, you want me to read? Okay, here you go. This is one you did. You want me to read?
We're going nowhere real fast.
Uh, we want to do it for three days next week, too.
Do you want me to, uh, X this one? I'll let you do it.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so real quick, tell me if three thirty-seven's been worked.
Hey, there we go. We're back on track.
Okay, I think I can, I think I can properly.
I left it in my vehicle for a reason. Even hot, it's gonna be good.
Okay, so let's do three thirty, three, three, seven then, if y'all ready. Let's see, this parcel's gonna be eight, zero, five, seven, five. Um, section twelve, township fourteen, range thirty-two of Lincoln County. The street address assigned is, well, that could be Mr. Jeff Baldridge, the petitioner's, uh, home address, I'm assuming, so I don't know if this property applies to that or not. But it is section twelve, township fourteen, range thirty-two. Current value is three hundred thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Mr. Baldridge is requesting a reduction to two hundred seventy-five thousand two ninety-five. And so, let's see, his comments are, twenty-five acres is coded to dry land by mistake, should be coded.
Is this their Hershey Southern prod- property?
Uh, well, West Wildlife Road, but that's where Jeff lives.
Okay.
But he's got land up on the river, North River.
So it's, we're talking about this property out here?
That'd be no, you see the North Platte River on the south end, Joe?
Well, I know the property here, but I just don't know. Okay, so we are talking about our North Platte property here. Thank you.
That's what it appears to be, yes, sir. Okay, so, um, let's see. Should be coded as grass grazing, reduces valuation by six hundred dollars to, from seventeen hundred, I'm sorry. Reduces the valuation from six hundred dollars an acre by six hundred dollars an acre. From seventeen hundred down to eleven hundred. There we get it. Average increase for, uh, I cannot read that, I'm sorry. Of twelve hundred versus of fifteen point nine assessed lowers the total also. The net, his net, I can read that. He suggests should be two hundred seventy-five thousand two ninety-five. Apologize that I can't read all the the notes on the math. So Julie.
And as you can see by GIS, we did have some classified as dry.
Okay.
Correct or incorrect, you said?
The dry land is incorrect. He's stating it should have just.
It should have been grass, not dry land.
Yeah.
So Julie, uh, yeah, Julie notes on, or initials on this. She says changing the dry land acres to grass land acres per owner and the GIS aerial imaging, imagery, the oven is provided to warrant changes in building values. Joe. By that, Julie, because you reclassified land and, and Mr. Baldridge had included average increases by region from a Realtor firm as evidentiary, uh, suggestions that were out of whack. But nevertheless, you did recognize that this should go to a grass situation, although he's protesting his land or his, uh, improvements as well, correct, Julie?
Um, I don't remember if you mentioned that in there at all, but.
He really doesn't talk about that in that narrative at all. Nevertheless, the parcel does also have improvements as well as the grass or in question, dry land farmland. So Julie recommended that the reclassification come into play. So she would suggest the land, I believe that would remain at a hundred and five thousand eighteen fifteen. Julie? I'm sorry, I'm, I have it. I'm just. Well, actually, actually what I have, Julie, you're, you're reducing his land and buildings. No, I'm sorry, you're not. My, my mistake. The buildings would remain at a hundred and eighty-three, seven, eighty. But somebody's math doesn't work here.
Okay, ask the Mr. Ranger.
Maybe it's mine. Okay, let me try this again. So the land would be reduced because of the classification to a hundred and five thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. The building site would remain at one hundred eighty-three thousand seven eighty, correct? And that would make our grant.
Maybe, maybe it's this one.
Oh, you're right. Okay.
One eighty-three, seven, eighty, yes. So that would make our total two hundred eighty-nine, five, nine, five. Two hundred eighty-nine thousand five ninety-five. So I would, uh, concur with Julie's recommendation. And that would be, uh, blah, blah, blah. I guess new evidence since, uh, she's reviewed the fact that the land is not, or is in fact pasture ground. So I think that's the number seven. Julie, do you agree? All right, that's my motion.
Second.
Rens?
Aye.
Eubly?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number three, five, six. This is from Ashana Durham, OBO, I C Rental Properties LLC. Property ID number is one, six, zero, five, zero, I'm assuming point zero, zero. Okay. Real property description is Fletcher's subdivision part of block five, block one. This is on the corner of Buffalo Bill and Rodeo Road on the southwest corner, just for common reference. Okay? Um, the protest, protested valuation for twenty twenty-three has land at sixteen thousand two hundred and six dollars, building and improvements at sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for total valuation of eighty-five thousand two hundred and four dollars. They're requesting a valuation of sixty-five thousand even. Reasons for requested valuation change is this property was purchased October twenty twenty-one. There have been no improvements made. This property sits at a busy intersection, North Buffalo and Rodeo Road, which would negatively affect its FMV. The roof has leaked in one part and has been repaired, and been repaired. The attached garage was converted years ago. Please see the attached disclosure statement and home inspection. Trying to find in this what the purchase price was.
Yellow card?
There it is. Seventy-five thousand dollars. October of twenty twenty-one, they're requesting a valuation of sixty-five thousand. The, looks like Ashley worked on this in the assessor's office. She changed the condition to above normal, which, um, the disclosure statement and home inspection, there's a lot of photos in there. Um, I'd agree with that condition, uh, that's been placed on it that reduced the valuation just shy of five thousand dollars for land staying the same. And the improvements dropping down to sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars for total valuation of eighty thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Um, I would agree with that. My motion, number eight, after inspection and review by the assessor, I move to lower the value due to the condition of the property to the numbers that I read into the record.
Second.
Eubly?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wains?
Aye. Aye.
Protest number four, six, six, Jeffrey Elmerch. For property number zero, zero, two, six, three, three, five, point, zero. It is Lincoln Highway Seventh Edition sixteen, two. They're asking that the property and improvement must be reduced from a hundred and thirty-three thousand three nineteen to one oh four, eight oh seven. Property needs a lot of work and updating to be worth new valuation. It would be my motion, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation of the assessor's recommendation as follows. Land thirteen thousand nine fifty-one. Improvements reduced to a hundred and six thousand seven thirty-eight from from one nineteen, three sixty-eight for a total from a hundred and thirty-three thousand three nineteen to one twenty-six eighty-nine, number seven.
Second.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Aye.
Rens?
Aye. Aye.
Protest four, twenty-nine for Michael Mulligan at zero, zero, four, three, zero, two, zero, point, zero, zero. Twenty-one sixteen West First Street, Thomas Edition forty-four. Protested valuation, a hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven. Lower request of a hundred and five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. Reason, uh, for request, house not worth current valuation due to age of kitchen and bathroom plus furnace AC is twenty-one years old, uh, minor damage. Uh, he did submit pictures that support his request. It was reviewed by charity. Um, kitchen and bathroom are dated, older furnace and AC units, but is well-maintained otherwise. She changed the condition to good. This lowered the valuation overall. Um, land stayed at twelve thousand six oh three. Improvements lowered to ninety-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-nine for a total valuation of a hundred and ten thousand two hundred and ninety-two. It is my recommendation, number seven, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wains?
Aye.
Rens?
Aye.
Eubly?
Aye.
Aye.
Protest two, three, eight, Billy and Maria Bergner. Twenty-seven, twenty-one, West Twenty-first Street, North Platte. Property ID three, four, seven, six, five. This is rodeo edition, fifth replat, three. They are protesting the total valuation of ninety-one thousand six hundred and two dollars, requesting sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars based on the, um, condition of the property. And, um, he is absolutely correct that the property is in quite, and the house is in quite poor condition as many, many photos would attest to. Henry evidently saw that the same way I'm seeing it. He is proposing a reduction, um, and it's gonna be my motion, number eight, after inspection and review by the assessor, I move to lower value due to the condition of the property, and that's what Henry's remisher after receiving tax rate information, changing condition to poor. So that will be land at thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars, building at fifty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars for a total valuation of sixty, uh, seventy-two, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Number eight is my motion.
Second.
Wains?
Aye.
Rens?
Aye.
Eubly?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Protest two, four, nine. Property ID is eight, nine, zero, two, three. The petitioners are Stephen D. and Lisa M. Globbets. The property's further, further described as part of the southwest quarter of section thirty-five, township twelve, range thirty-one. Eighty-six point one three acres. This is out on nineteen oh eight nine South Somerset Road.
God, my last one. Boy, that's good for me.
The protested land value is a hundred and thirty-four thousand thirty dollars. With the building, the building's at two hundred ninety-nine thousand three oh seven, so the total value today is four hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars. They are requesting, uh, the building reduction. The land would stay at thirty, uh, one hundred thirty-four thousand thirty dollars. But the buildings are requested to be lowered to two, oh, actually, uh, they didn't differentiate. They wrote in the same number for the requested valuation as already exist. However, they have a two-page of narrative on why they should be lowered, so I'm sure that that's just a misunderstanding on how to fill out the form. Uh, wrote, right, they write through writing this and protest the raise, of the raising the value of the property belonging to Stephen Lisa Globbets located in nineteen oh nine, eighty-nine South Somerset Road. Several reasons. I won't go into all of them. Most of them are unfortunately beyond the scope of things we can consider. One being, uh, lack of, or road condition that they contend is, is not worthy of, uh, kind of compensation on their part to the level that is obligated. Uh, snow removal's been an issue is another point. The only one I would, I would just ask for a brief comment or narrative from charity or whomever charity did review this, is their number four point. It says, uh, uh, we lease our property out every year for cattle to graze, and we've even raised our own cattle. I complained to this fact and still quote, "To be fair to everyone, because all of your neighbors are also listed as rural residential." We're going to leave it like that. Where'd she go? She's gone. Sorry. That was the only thing I just, I would agree, comment on the record, but, um, to the point of, um, this is being, this is being treated like all the other grass acreages around it, Julie.
How many acres is it?
It's, uh, eighty-six point one three acres.
That's rural residential?
Yes, sir. And they do, and they did provide, not only with the narrative, they did provide some pictures, excuse me, pictures. I need some of, I, I need some of, uh, of, uh.
My alcohol?
Yeah. Michaela's giggle juice. Okay, so to that point, they, they show pictures of outbuildings, ag building, ag-looking buildings, um, a baler, um, a hay baler and so forth, so. I wouldn't doubt their contention that they certainly use the acreages for agriculture now, whether fairly or unfairly is being categorized as to, to, uh. Yeah, and I didn't look up. I thought she was manning the post.
She was. She walked up and made a statement.
She didn't want to listen to me. I don't blame her. She's not alone. At any rate, um, that's the only one that I was called into question. The rest of it, like I said, uh, we can't, we can't differentiate because they have to get their emergency services from Wallace instead of North Platte. Longer response time. And I understand the frustration, but nothing we can evaluate or reevaluate as far as the property tax or pop, not the tax, but the evaluation value or overall value. At any rate, let's move on. After Julie's comments, I'm confident this has been treated like similar rural residentials.
The ones to the north of it, yes, and we do have some more of them at Platte, but, I mean, so we do have some of these larger tracts that are rural residential.
Okay, thank you. All right. So her recommendation is no change.
There's charity if you wanted to.
No, there, there she is, charity. We're talking about two forty-nine, which is the Globbets in Somerset. And the only, and I was just pointing out for the record that, uh, most of the stuff that they take issue with are out of the realm of what we can evaluate property or evaluate property on. So, um, response time for emergency services and road condition and snow removal. But item four was pointed out, um, we lease our property out every year for cattle to graze on and have even raised cattle. I complained to this fact and still by the assessor quote, "To be fair to everyone, because all your neighbors are also listed as rural residential, we're going to leave it like that." I want to know who that's fair to. Now, I was just asking Julie, and so you can chime in, charity, but I'm assuming these other small ru- rural residentials are also treated the same. Okay.
What's the average size?
Six, eighty-six point one three acres.
I, here's my question. If they were to go and.
If they were to go and subdivide that property off, you know, we subdivide it off every week or two, you know, acre, five acres, ten acres, when somebody wants to sell a house off, right?
Right.
Or they keep it and farm the rest. If they were to subdivide their house off, leave cows running on the other part of that, would that not be agricultural on the other part then? I mean, what else was it used?
It depends, because their house sits like in the middle, so you might still have forty acres, fifty acres there, I would say. So it's hard, it's hard to say.
Well, their pictures showed a baler.
Julie's question more than a me question. Those are the tough ones. We usually ask them in reading some of the documentation and stuff like, to qualify for ag, what does that mean? Versus like, you know, hobby farming and stuff. So do they, one of the questions it says to ask is, do they file, do they contact your attorney with the vigilance when you're a taxpayer turn? As if you're filing under ag, as if you've got ag insurance coming in.
I see.
That is one of the things.
Well, they didn't.
You have a lot of forty, fifty, sixty acres that have a few head of cows, and have some horses.
They said they had cattle past tense. They have run cattle past tense, and they rent it out for grass now.
Okay. You know, those are tough too, because what cattle are on that size of a one for thirty days?
Depends on how many pairs you put on there.
If they can ag, it can come, you know, it can be.
In that grass, in that country, you're probably looking at thirty-five acres for a pair. On a summer grass, maybe forty, pushing it.
And with, if this was going to sell on the market, is it going to be advertised and sold as an, you know, ag, is it going to be sold as rural residential? So those are the different types of questions that we do ask. These size ones are tough, when there is not specifically.
Well, I understand that, I understand, I understand.
Ag is there all the time, or they don't own larger tracts and stuff.
And truthfully, in that soil type, and I think I know what kind of soil type it is out there that far, it's sandy long. And I, I do know a little bit about how, how many acres it takes to run a cow cap pair. So.
So these are the ones.
I understand your point, I understand charity's point, that, you know, the parcel pretty small for considering it an ag thing, I really do. So I'm going to move forward.
I mean, there is a baler, but that looks like that's not much of a house.
Well, that would be an intermittent probably event, you know.
Significant, insignificant. The hard part about this little area, if you go back to G I S, move out to that whole section. So this one's highlighted, the one north of it and the one north of that, and then, like all these that are in purple.
Right.
I'm almost certain they all have sales on them, and they're all significant sales.
Got it.
They paid forty-nine thousand for their piece back in '04. So that's only five hundred and sixty bucks a foot. But the other ones, now go back to, go back to G I S. Their holders' sales too, so.
No, no, three thousand dollars an acre for the land.
Right. So that one sold for eighty-five thousand in 2020, and that's twenty-two, so go back to G I S.
So the ground sold for eighty-five, you're saying?
Could just be that one right there.
Sold for eighty-five thousand?
For eighty-five thousand.
How much were they?
No improvement?
Oh, I've got, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong line, I told you the wrong thing, I'm terribly sorry. The land itself is one hundred and thirty-four thousand thirty, not, the other one's the house, I'm sorry, and the, and the buildings.
Five thousand.
Hundred and thirty-four thousand thirty divided by eighty-six point one three.
Fifteen?
Somewhere, seventeen.
Oh, one fifteen, sorry.
So that's seventeen hundred an acre for that.
And this is fifteen, so right in the same place?
Yeah.
But was there an improvement on that?
No, these were all sold vacant.
Oh, okay. So the land was selling for more than that's assessed at even at rural residential?
Pretty close, yeah. Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
That's okay. And that smaller piece that was next to that one, that one sold for seventy thousand. So this, this one right here, that one right there.
Okay.
Sold for seventy thousand.
How many acres was that?
I mean, thirty, basically thirty acres.
Okay, I'm sold, I'm moving forward. All right, charity says recommends no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. Sales in this area support this value, as she's just demonstrated. Land would remain at one hundred and thirty-four thousand thirty dollars. Improvements at two hundred ninety-nine thousand three oh seven. For a total of four hundred thirty-three thousand three thirty-seven. My motion would be to concur and approve the no change, number four.
Second.
Burns.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Wayne.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayne's.
Aye.
W's.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four five one. This is from a Mark. Mahatchik?
Mahatchik. Mahatchik, Mahatchik. Sorry, thanks.
Property ID number is twenty-two seven three zero point zero zero. The real property description is lot two of Chris, Criz. Criz is second replat, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
She's married to a J.
The protested valuation for 2023. And I think he's got some, he's got his numbers flipped around here. But we have land at fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Improvements at one hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars for total valuation of one hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-one. Again, I think he transposed the columns here. He's requesting land, I'm, I'm assuming at one hundred and forty thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Reasons for the requested valuation change is too much needs done for property to be valued any higher, such as foundation work, northwest corner, siding, windows, water leakage into the basement, gutter system, and need to replace rotten wood. Looks like charity reviewed this. You're recommending no change and sufficient evidence to warrant change. The referee agrees with that, however, photographs that were provided during the referee's meeting have been emailed and should be reviewed for further consideration. There's photographs that are in here.
And I have not seen them.
Okay.
So we need to probably see the one.
So there's, there's photographs that's showing the foundation definitely has separation. There's absolutely clear water in the basement. There's water damage around windows in the basement. There is rotten wood. The siding on the house, I'm looking at the data sheet to all the previous comments. Siding in good shape, overall very good condition of the house. And that's what it's still listed at, is that correct?
Do you want me to review those photos and make a different testimony tonight, or can you relook?
I would like that, please.
Yeah, we haven't seen them yet, so let's take a look if you don't mind.
I'm thinking there may need to be a condition change to this.
I thought I pushed those over to you, but maybe I didn't, so I'm sorry. You're fine, honey.
Okay. Protest number four seventy-six, Jasmine Moore. PI number zero zero eight zero nine eight zero point zero. It's part of the west half of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of twenty-three fourteen thirty-two, two point eight one acres. See enclosed page in photos. They're asking that the land be reduced from forty-one three thirty-five to thirty-five thousand. Improvements for one hundred and seventy thousand five thirty to one thirty-seven seven oh nine. Total land improvement from two eleven eight sixty-five to one seventy-two seven oh two. And basically, the photos just show some, you know, rough conditions, some partially completed areas, a lot of wear and tear. Would be my motion, number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation as follows. Leave the land at forty-one thousand three thirty-five. Reduce the improvement to one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Two hundred and forty-one thousand, oh, seventy dollars. Total land improvement from two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-five to one hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and five dollars, number seven.
Second.
That was protest four sixty-seven, not four seventy-six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read wrong.
You're just like, no, it was good.
Thank you for correcting that. Protest number four six seven.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Aye.
Burns.
Julie.
Aye.
Protest four three zero, Judith Pierce, four thirty locust, Sutherland, Nebraska. ID nine zero zero seven five point zero zero. Lee Case Edition, lot one, block three. Protested valuation, total of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and fourteen. Asking for a reduction to thirty-five thousand dollars. Reason for request, no electrical, water, gas hooked up, black mold, mice infested. This was, and there are a lot of pictures attached that support the claims. It was reviewed by Ashley, she changed the condition to very poor. The house would need to be completely gutted. So that leaves the land valuation at sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty. The improvements down to twenty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-two for a total of thirty-eight thousand eighty-two dollars. My recommendation is number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayne's.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Okay, so before, this is a good example of that very poor condition versus, so like, to me, this is a very poor condition house where it has to be completely gutted, that no one is living in it. Versus like, that one yesterday that you asked me why I didn't put it to very poor is because people are still living in it, and it's still livable. Where this one is, in my opinion, not. She's actually, she moved out, she lives here in town now, I believe, but, yes. So, but this one would have to be completely gutted. So there's kind of, because I know you and I have talked about it a little bit, that kind of difference.
So, I mean, I still, I still contend that just because somebody's living in a house does not mean that the house is livable. And that's where we need to really be cognizant. I mean, we have people that live in squalored situations on a, unfortunately, a regular basis, and so.
I guess, in the, over the years, as I've done Henry and charity stuff, and then Mia's coming in last year in the Fraser, that very poor condition is where, you know, it's, it's sitting there. Like those ones that are used for storage, you know, that can't really be lived in. I mean, and we might have some that are very poor that people are living in. I mean, I'm sure there are.
We, we do. And so I don't want the benchmark for that condition to be somebody is not living in there or somebody is, because.
No, but I'm just saying, like, this is, in my opinion, that's my difference. Yeah.
Yeah, the photos supported it.
We had one yesterday that I was looking at, that the photo supported, in my opinion, very poor condition. And notes showed that there's been meth lab parts found on the property and everything else. But it's just, again, I don't want the benchmark to be because somebody's living in a property or not living in a property to be the differentiator between those conditions at all, so.
Okay. Protest three one nine. This is being protested by Savage and Browning for Sapphire Properties. Their address is Oberlin Park, Kansas. The owner lives in Oregon. This is actually the Comfort Inn and Suites out by Iron Eagle Golf Course. Property ID is two one five four three point two five. Iron Eagle Second Administrative Subdivision, Lot One. Address is twenty-eight oh nine Halligan Drive. They are protesting, just because they got millions of dollars here.
Got everybody's attention.
Just kidding, just kidding. This'll make a good footage. I did that.
Are you, hold on a minute, you need to pause anything?
No. Okay, the property owners are protesting the valuation of five million nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. They're requesting five million three hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred dollars. And they're basing that request on income and expense statements, star report, and comparable properties that indicate a lower value. Henry and charity worked on this, and after reviewing the taxpayer information, they priced the parcel using in the income approach. And there's a tremendous amount of information in here regarding income, number of nights, revenue per room available, and all that sort of information. And it does support what Henry and charity have reduced this somewhat, not probably to the level they were requesting. But based upon that income approach, my motion is going to be, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, that being the income approach. I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which the land does not change value, it's two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Building at five million three hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for a total of five million six hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Five point six from what?
Five point six from five point nine. They had requested about a six hundred thousand dollar reduction, and it looks like it was effectively half that, about three hundred.
About three hundred thousand.
Based on the income approach. And talking with hotel managers out in that area and other parts of town, with the overbuilding of, overavailability of rooms in this town, the income approach, I understand why they want to take that, because the income level is down. I was trying to find the yellow sheet here on that sale recently.
Is that your motion?
My motion is number seven.
Yes. Okay, I'll second it, and you can discuss it, Joe, or question or whatever.
Joe, it sold May of twenty-two for eight million sixty-seven thousand.
I know what it sold for, I just wanted to show you.
I saw that.
Okay.
Sounds good. I, whenever you're ready. So to your point about what it sold for, talking about trying to be consistent, we have looked at income approach and accepted that as an alternate valuation, correct?
Yes.
If they, if they request it, we go.
Virtually every time we've, we've accommodated that, typically.
If they provide us.
If they provide you with sound numbers, okay, so since that.
And there's plenty of.
Since that came up in the discussion, I wanted it to be in the narrative, thank you.
Wayne's.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Before you read it, to that point, what, what has been the assessor's office's practice? Because we don't have to use it, we can use any of the three, right? That's our choice, what we use, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make that very, very clear to everyone.
We're not, we're not compelled to do it.
There you go, thank you.
I would concur with that, all right. This is protest three four seven. Parcel ID is six four, or six seven four zero, six seven four zero. It's part of the Alura, Alura Edition seventeen two. It appears to be, the physical address is seven oh nine East B Street here in North Platte. The petitioner is Mr. Mark R. Johnson of Fort Collins, Colorado. And again, to reiterate, the property itself is at seven oh nine East B Street. The land value currently is nine thousand three thirty-eight. The buildings are valued at eighty-nine four forty-eight, and the total is, right now is ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Now, Mr. Johnson is not disputing the land value at ninety-three thirty-eight, but asking that the improvements of the home, actually, specifically, be reduced to seventy-nine thousand two twenty-eight for a total of eighty-eight thousand five sixty-six. be reduced to seventy-nine thousand two twenty-eight for a total of eighty-eight thousand five sixty-six. His reason is fairly succinct. Condition of house, he provided a myriad of pictures showing it is a brick home, a brick-faced home, and it's got some serious issues with the steps and some of the other fascia on the block, the brick. Also has some cracking in the basement on the wall. Henry took a look at Mr. Johnson's very detailed pictures and spoke with him. After speaking with the taxpayer, Henry says, and reviewing all the information, changed the condition to normal and applied a five percent functional depreciation for foundation issues, which I would certainly agree that there are. So Henry would recommend the land would stay at nine thousand three thirty-eight. Buildings would reduce to seventy-seven thousand seven forty-two because of the depreciation and foundation issues and condition for the total of eighty-seven thousand eighty dollars. So the motion, to me, could be either be seven or eight, because eight references condition. He didn't physically inspect it, a number eight, but he did inspect the pictures. So to me, splitting hairs if it's a seven or an eight. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with seven, because there's more factors beyond condition, so I'm gonna say number seven. Second.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four-five-nine. This is from an Adrian Martinez. Property ID number is thirty-two seven eight zero point zero zero. Real property description is Reinartz subdivision, Lot Six. The protested valuation for 2023 has land at fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Improvements at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for total valuation of a hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. The requested valuation brings the aggregate down to a hundred thousand dollars even. The reasons for the requested valuation are, they, they said, see attachment. There's no statement. It's just photos that they provided, and a lot of them. It looks like Charity worked on this. She recommends no change. House is above normal condition, which, looking at the photos, I would, I would concur with that. I mean, there's some cracks in the, in the pavement. That's the worst that I see. Some dent, it looks like somebody backed into their garage door, and they do have a dent or two and a small hole in the casing of the window. But in general, the house is in above normal condition, as there have been some improvements made to the property, and is well-maintained with the exception of a few minor items, which are highlighted in the photos. I would also note, and she annotates it, the property was purchased August sixteenth of 2021 for a hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars. It's assessed currently, 2023, at a hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. So the market price that they, arms-length transaction that they had is far above the hundred thousand that they're asking for. This also went to a referee. They recommend no change. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. The sale of the subject sets the market value. Reason number five, I would move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change. And I would keep those values at what we have in 2023, as read into the.
Second.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Protest number four-sixty-eight, Jasmine Moore. PI number zero zero two-five-five eight zero point zero. And I'll tell you what the legal is here, a matter of fact. Legal description is Laken Highway Edition, Lot Seven, Block Nine. They're asking that the land be reduced from nine thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars to six thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight. Buildings from eleven thousand eight eighty-one to five thousand. Total land improvements from twenty-one six twenty-three to eleven thousand nine twenty-eight. See additional photos page for information. There was not a referee, and it would be my motion that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower to the valuation of the assessor's recommendation as follows. Land nine thousand seven forty-two. Reducing the home from eleven eight eighty-one to eight thousand four dollars. It is in very poor condition. That's giving a functional depreciation of fifty percent for that house being gutted. Total land improvements of seventeen thousand seven forty-six, number seven.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Protest number four-nine-five, Rick and Rissa Peters. Thirteen oh-two North Sherman. Property zero one one two nine zero point zero zero. Camfield subdivision ten. Julie, I'm gonna need a little assistance with this one. I think because they're combining two properties, the protested value and the requested valuation aren't really making sense for me. So it says protested valuation thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-six and a requested valuation of forty-eight thousand. Their reason for request, just a garage. We don't think it's increased in value this much. Was reviewed by Charity, and her remarks are price to land as if combined with zero zero one one two nine five point zero zero and change the interior finish of the garage to low quality. Her recommendation is land at eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen. Improvements at thirty-five thousand two hundred and twelve for a total of forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. So when I look at the requested and the protested value, it almost looks like they're asking it for it to be raised, but that's not. When you combine it, it changes all that? You don't see this sheet? So it says protested valuation thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-six.
That was twenty-two value, yeah.
Okay.
That was not the certified twenty-two.
I see. So these are, these are out of whack.
It should have been sixty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-nine.
And I'm not gonna write that in there, because you guys have it, okay. So my recommendation is number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Protest number three-five-four, Betty and Donald Hawes. Seven-one-two-six East Thunderhead Drive, North Platte. Property ID five-nine-zero-one-five. Legal description is part of the south half, of the south half of nine fourteen twenty-nine. Twenty point two-seven acres. They are protesting the overall valuation of four hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Requesting valuation of four hundred and five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Say see attachment one. Attachment one. This is native grassland existing in small plots that surround the house and outbound, outbuildings. This land cannot be built on nor divided into lots due to the height according to airport regulations. So that gives you an idea where this is at, or if you don't already know that. The house is fifty-four years old with original cedar shingles that are in dire need of replacement. Boy, those lasted a long time, Joe. Extreme weather and heavy rains damaged the front steps, and they do attach a picture of the front steps. Nothing of the inside of the house. Homemade swimming pool is fifty years old with major cracks in the floor and is unusable without substantial reconstruction. Have no pictures to.
That I can verify.
Can substantiate that. So what we have come up with here, Henry looked at this, and he is suggesting no change. Information provided does not warrant a change. Just the shingles, I don't know whether there's something that we, that's poor condition, or... Is that something?
Do you have it in above normal for its age, above normal condition?
Well, from what I see from the exterior pictures, the buildings are in good condition. I don't see anything about the shingles. Is that something that we can't take into account when we look at condition of a building?
Do you want me to go grab Henry? It was his.
I wanna, Joe, is that something?
Ask Charity to come help us with one, too.
Have we ever changed the condition of the house just because of shingles? They don't say anything about siding.
Done functional depreciation.
That might be something, yeah, like Christmas, and they might add.
We did just, just yesterday, the day before. I was thinking we did something.
On shake shingles.
We did something. Yeah, that's right, we did.
Yeah, on shake shingles.
The gentleman that protested it. Yeah, fifty-four years. That's a long time to have shake shingles. See if it runs up there.
That's crazy. Wow.
He's the one that's had the adjustment on since 2017.
Correct, a five percent.
Give him another five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, if you get five-quarter, three-quarter shingles, unless you have some really, really bad hills, it's more often.
They, they last a long time.
Yeah, we're just talking with Mr. Bittens, so.
Because they do have some cushion to them, right, Joe?
I want her to look at this one, actually, when she gets done.
Henry, the Don Hawes property up on the road north of the airport.
Okay, what do I have?
You have no change. He's, they're making a, their biggest request is for reduction, probably based upon the fifty-four-year-old original cedar shingles. Is there any, is there any ability?
Well, is there? And I, did they have photos? That's what I wasn't.
I don't see, I, the only photo I see is, is of the front step that's damaged because of excess rain.
Yep, and that's all they had. So, yeah, that's why I didn't make an adjustment. I wasn't, I didn't see them. I, I, I mean, to that point, we did the functional depreciation with the shake shingle roof Pastor Reeves, because there was visible damage in photos that were provided. And photos. And that's why I went the way I did. I didn't have photos to prove anything to me.
Thank you very much. Good, good bit of information for future folks that wish to protest.
Exactly.
Great, great.
We took a lot of great photos.
Pictures. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant a change. Number two.
Second. Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Julie, would you do me a favor? Maybe have somebody from your office check with Betty and Don. Wouldn't probably be in a condition to recall anyway, but maybe mention that if they ever do protest again, that they might have some photos.
Okay, I can do that. Okay. Joe, Joe provided a filler, so you're good now. Protest four-one-eight. Parcel two-nine-five-nine-zero. Described as more houses replat, south, a hundred and nineteen foot of, I assume, Lot One, Block Three, perhaps. Joseph A. Odell is the petitioner. And I believe the physical address is twenty-nine oh-one Anna Avenue here in North Platte, and yes, it is. Mr. Odell's current valuation is an aggregate number. It's a hundred and eleven thousand nine sixty-three. He's requesting a reduction on the aggregate to ninety thousand dollars. His comments are, I have done no improvements the last several years, and the home needs approximately thirty thousand dollars in repairs. The home siding and windows are original and need replaced. HVAC system is original and as well, needs replaced. He provided a number of pictures showing degradation on the lap siding, window trim, and so forth. Charity did look at this and concedes in her comments, siding is rotting along the bottom of the board. Some of the windows are showing signs of dry rot. Original furnace and AC units, she's acknowledging that as well. She provided some relief by changing the condition to normal. So she would recommend leaving the land at twelve thousand seven oh-two, but reducing the improvements to ninety thousand seven seven seven, which would make the total value of the property to a hundred and thirty, or, a hundred and three thousand four seventy-nine. So that would be number seven. That'd be my motion. Second.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four-one-nine. This is from a Jesse Allen. Property ID is two-three-five-seven-three-point-seven-three. Real property description is Lakeview Estates, ninth subdivision, Lot Nine. The protested valuation for 2023 has landed at thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Improvements at four hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars for total valuation of four hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. They're requesting an aggregate new valuation set at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. Reason for the requested valuation change, they provided a statement. They say, here are three houses closest to seven oh-nine Clearwater Court. The bottom two are brand-new homes. The bottom two are just across the alley from us. Our house was built in 2012. We purchased it in 2014 for three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars after it was on the market for eighteen months. Again, different market. Has no upgrades since the deck in 2014, has ten-plus-year-old basic appliances, fixtures, flooring, laminate countertops, et cetera. The depreciation of the home must be factored in. Yes, our big square footage raises the price, but square footage is the only way our house is quote-unquote "better than these." The 2023 valuation reflects an eleven-point-five percent blanket increase from 2021. This is by, this is far more than general real estate trends in North Platte for houses like this. Three comps that they provided. And, and there's photos. I encourage everybody to look at it on the screen. This is a nice home, in spite of what they say the age is. Their square footage is two thousand five hundred and twenty square feet of living area. And the homes that they provided actually probably reinforce the valuation that we have. Theirs is at, set at a hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents per square foot. The first one that they provided is a hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents per square foot. The other two, the bottom two, which are new, are one ninety-seven point sixty-five per square foot and one eighty-four point one-six per square foot. So it's right in line with, with properties. The, it looks like Ashley worked on this. And you recommend no change and sufficient evidence to warrant a change. All south-side properties received a one-point-one-six adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. Would be my motion. Number one, or number four, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Protest number four-sixty-nine, Penny Burke. Property identification number is zero zero one nine eight zero point zero. It's the original town, Lot Seven, Block Seventy. They're asking the land improvements be reduced from seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars to forty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Property's not changed in over six years and is being evaluated on pictures back in 2015 when the attached garage was least, I can't read, better condition, I suppose. The attached garage was removed back in 2018. And my motion would be number seven, that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower to the assessor's recommendation as follows. Removing the garage and giving, changing it to a normal condition.
change it to a normal condition would make the motion that the land be fourteen thousand four twenty-nine. Improvements fifty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-eight for a total of sixty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy, one hundred and seventeen dollars. Number seven.
Second.
Luler.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz. Keely.
Protest four nine six, Rick and Rissa Peters, fifteen oh six North Sherman Avenue, zero zero one one two nine five point zero zero. Camfield subdivision, TP. This is the companion, one to the one that I just did, and because I'm a slow learner, when these numbers don't make sense to me, I'll go back here. So the current valuation, land is fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-nine. Buildings at forty-six thousand seven hundred and eight for a total of sixty thousand eight sixty-seven. They are asking for it to be reduced to fifty thousand dollars. Reason, it's a nineteen seventy-two trailer house. There are no pictures attending the application, but it was worked by Charity. In her recommendation, she priced the land as if combined with the last protest, which was zero zero one one two nine zero point zero zero. That puts the land at eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen. The improvements at forty-six thousand seven hundred and eight for a total of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three. My recommendation is number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Keely. Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Protest three five eight, Marcin Franzen. List a Valley Vista Drive, North Platte address, but this is property at Jeffrey Lakes, lot twenty-four. Property ID is six eight four six zero, lot twenty-four. And this would be part of a couple of different sections that they note in here. But their first one is most thirty-three days twelve days twenty-seven. Again, this is lot twenty-four at Jeffrey Lake. They are protesting the valuation of four hundred three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, requesting three hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And they see enclosed pictures. And there are a few items that would indicate the condition is probably not ideal. There are some roof, eve, and soffit issues that
Please scroll through this.
appear to need attention. So Henry's assessment was, is after speaking with the taxpayer and reviewing information, change the condition to normal, and that would probably make some sense on the main building. The outbuildings aren't in too bad a shape for outbuildings, but the house probably has some condition issues that warrant his reduction to normal. So my motion will be number eight. After inspection and review by the assessor, I move to lower the value due to the condition of the property. The land is going to be at zero because it's just improvements only. Buildings will be, and total valuation will be three hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Second.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Keely.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Protest three four five. Parcel number two nine four eight two, two nine four eight two. Kathy Kilham, Kilham is the petitioner. Is also described as Menick subdivision, lots ten and eleven, I believe. I believe the physical address of this, and it's a manufactured single-ride home, twenty-four oh five West Sixth Street. Value is, and this is a personal property because it is a mobile home, correct? Is that where it's annotated, or is this?
I think that's what we're getting at here. Four three two. Is that four eight two? Yeah, it's four three two. We did wrong, parcel number one.
Let me look at the real estate card. Two nine two four three two.
We had eight two. Sorry, I forgot, sorry.
Two nine four three two on the ID card.
I guess it is one. Yeah, two.
So this is personal property, Scott.
No.
No.
Mobile homes are real estate.
They've, they've listed it down as personal property, so duly noted that it's not.
But let's, let's talk about that, then, when that changed and why it didn't, because.
I don't know what year it did change, but I started in personal property since I've been here, but I do know prior to the
Okay.
Late, late.
So nevertheless, even though it's in the wrong line, I mean, it should be under land. I mean, buildings, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it should be on there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just make a arrow to move that up to
They did use Stafford's license plate in the motor vehicle.
Buildings.
Changed in the early nineties, so it's been that way a long time.
So ten thousand seven forty-eight is the current value of the building. Okay? They're requesting a reduction to three thousand dollars. Writing and pan again up for the buildings. Ms. Kilham states, besides being taxed quadruple for a nineteen ninety-seven Champion mobile home compared to others, I know newer, nicer homes, which they are taxed well under a hundred dollars per year. Also, if given no relief, I'll have to let it go for taxes. Besides the obvious, see in the pictures, there's much more issues. I actually looked at this, and there are some pictures, and there's seriously a water damage problem in the ceiling, so I have no doubt that it's got some bad leaks somewhere. Actually recommend to change the condition to below normal. And noted, notes that there's already has a functional fifty percent depreciation for other issues such as window needs replaced, leaky roof that needs replaced and needing to be updated, and water damage to the ceiling, and that one's really a glaring problem. So unfortunately, they have some serious problems with roof leaking somewhere. So her recommendation is to, of course, the land is zero because it's a rental lot. Improvements would be this trailer and this. She reduced it somewhat because of the condition to nine thousand three hundred eighty, or nine thousand three hundred ninety dollars. So the total is nine thousand three hundred ninety dollars, nine three ninety. So I, I think condition's the primary reason for this, so I'm gonna say number eight.
Second.
Brunz.
Aye.
Keely.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams, okay, sorry.
Charity, there you are, here.
Sorry, Steve Vinton came over to see me, so I had to.
Okay, so talk to me about this. This is a bank appraisal, right?
It is for a purchase.
Go ahead.
Okay.
It's for a purchase.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest four two eight. This is from Jeff Dowhauer. The parcel ID, the property ID is sixteen nine nine zero point zero zero. The real property description is Flynn Edition, block, or lot ten, block sixteen. The property valuation for two thousand twenty-three has landed at ten thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Buildings at forty-one thousand seventy-three dollars for a total valuation of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. They're requesting an aggregate valuation of thirty-five thousand dollars. Reasons for their requested valuation change are the siding has not been manufactured in years. The electric was in process of upgrade. Front porch and door are falling apart. Bedroom walls are lath and plaster in process of upgrade. Plumbing is old and is being upgraded. Garage leaks, and they have no street drains. There are quite a few photos that were provided to back this up. There's definitely a condition issue with this. Looks like Ashley worked on it. She changed the condition on the house to below normal and detached garage to fair condition. This reduced the recommended valuation for two thousand twenty-three for land being set at ten thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars, improvements at thirty-five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars for a total valuation of forty-six thousand one hundred and nine dollars. Number eight, it would be my motion that after inspection and review by the assessor, I move to lower the value due to the condition of the property.
Second.
Keely.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, I had a question for you. We had a property earlier, and I didn't know if that was a rental property from somebody out of town. It was an Adrian Martinez. Was it the Adrian Martinez I'm familiar with that used to reside in Lincoln, Nebraska? Or was it a local?
It's probably a local. I went to a school with an Adrian Martinez here locally, so I think it might be that individual. But
Curious.
Be interesting.
Yeah. Okay, protest number four seventy-one, Chad Angela Durham, property number zero zero nine five eight point oh eight point zero. They're asking land and improvements be reduced from four hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars to three hundred and fifty thousand. This is my valuation's gone up, hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars since two thousand eighteen with no improvements, and any comparable properties valued much less, including our neighbors. Says the basement is not finished. In my motion, number seven, that after testimony and evidence presented center to the assessor, I move to lower the value to the assessor's recommendation as follows. We did change the basement to a minimal finish because it's not completed. Corrected the bathrooms and number of fixtures and still left on the functional that we had on there previously for an unfinished business basement. So it would be my motion that the land be thirty-five thousand two eighty, the improvements four hundred and ten thousand one thirty-nine for a total of four hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. Number seven.
Second.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Keely.
Aye.
Protest four nine nine, Jason Borda at seventy-two forty Lookout Drive, ID zero zero eight seven zero zero six point zero six. This is in the Janabhar Heights, first subdivision, lot four, block one. Tested valuation, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and thirteen. Asking for a reduction to three hundred and forty thousand even. Reason, improvements to listed property and surrounding lots are substantially less than the proposed fifty-three thousand two hundred and fourteen assessed increase. Also, nearby similar homes sells were at three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Example properties, seven twenty-one Eagle Circle sold six twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three. I don't believe, other than that statement, there is any other supporting evidence. It was reviewed by Charity. Her recommendation is no change. Sales in this neighborhood support this value. That puts land at forty-five thousand one hundred and five dollars. Improvements at three hundred and twelve, five hundred and eight dollars for a total of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. My recommendation is number four. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Aye.
Woodruff. Williams. Brunz. Keely.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Protest number four seven zero.
It is.
That's a new one, correct? Four seven zero?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, this is a Penny Berg. Show an address of six twenty North Maple for their address, but the property they're protesting is six fourteen North Maple, North Platte. Property ID is two eight six five. This would be original town, south half of one and two, ninety-six. They are protesting the total valuation of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. They are requesting thirty thousand. They say they purchased this property just a couple of years ago, and it sat empty for over twenty years. And it does need repairs as they state, as they show in their photos. I'm sure this must be property next door they wanted to buy and clean up, I'm guessing. But it does need a lot of work. But anyway, Ashley reviewed this, changed the condition to very poor, which is a very good thing to do. The land stays the same, then at eight thousand two hundred and fifty-three. Improvements down to twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seven dollars for a total of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty. So I think because this has changed condition to very poor, this should be a number eight.
Second.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Keely.
Uh, yes, aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Protest four one seven. ID of the parcel.
I'm done.
Where is it? Oh, I thought it was gonna be there, but it's not. Eight seven six one seven. Parcel eight seven six one seven. This is a Lake Maloney Lot one fifty B. You find it? That's it. Um, Mrs. Conley, Erin L. and Kamala K. Conley are the petitioners. Described as five twenty Birdie Lane, Lake Maloney Lot one fifty B, as stated earlier. North Platte. Apparently, the buildings are three hundred fifty-six thousand seven seven six. There are, there's no land value because of the leasehold. They want it reduced to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Their statement is this, we do not live on the lake and lease our land. We live on the golf course. For reassessment actions two and three, we have a holding bond behind us. They attached a bank appraisal from two thousand twenty, and then she increased charts from the assessor's office and highlighted item three for two thousand twenty-three leasehold values changed for these areas. Properties across the street from the lake increased from fifty to a hundred thousand, and I would constitute this as being across the street because it's on the golf course. Been there a couple of times. Charity looked at this, and I just conferred with her, and she conters that the, all the appraisal numbers are, you know, basically three years old now. And we all know that changes in real estate values around the lake, unfortunate or unfortunate, depending if we're buying or selling. She recommends no change. Evidence provided does not warrant a change. So she would leave the improvements at three hundred fifty-six thousand seven seventy-six. My motion is to approve her no change, number four.
Second.
Aye.
Brunz. Keely.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff. Williams.
Aye.
I have, this is a continuation from one that I was working on earlier and was reading things into the record, but I'm gonna start over and just make sure the board is refreshed on which property we're talking about. It is for protest number four five one, Mark Mahachek. Property ID number is twenty-two seven three zero point zero zero. This is lot two of Chris's second replat, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. The protested valuation has landed at fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Improvements at a hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars for a total valuation of a hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. The, and again, I think they transpose the columns here, but I'm assuming that their requested valuation is an aggregate of a hundred and forty thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. The reasons for the requested valuation change are too much needs done to the property to be valued any higher, such as foundation work, northwest corner, siding, windows, water leakage into the basement, gutter system, replaced rotten wood. They did provide photos during the referee meeting. Prior to that, the assessor's recommendation was no change and sufficient evidence to warrant a change. The referee agreed with that, however, stated that photos have been emailed and should be reviewed for further consideration. I had Charity go ahead. I asked her to take a look at those and give consideration to the condition of the property. It was, the property was rated a very good condition. Is that correct, Charity? It was, the property was rated very good condition, is that correct, Charity? Okay? After she looked at everything during our protest hearing, the northwest corner is unfinished and looks like it has water seepage, corrected the basement's finished area to 720 square feet, gave the house a 10% functional depreciation for water seepage issues, changed the condition to above normal from very good due to the condition of the siding and basement windows needing replaced. Windows on the main floor have been replaced, and the roof was replaced at some point, which is why the condition is in above normal. Those photos that were provided absolutely warrant that change to the condition. I thank you for taking the time to relook at that. So, based off of those, that work that Charity just did, I would move number 12. I move to lower the valuation after receiving information presented at the protest hearing with the referee to land staying the same at $15,248. The dwelling, okay, so, hold on, let me do some math here. They separate dwelling and improvements out. All right, so, improvements in buildings being valued at $120,922, for a total valuation of $136,170, which is less than what they were requesting in their valuation change. So, again, thank you for that work, Charity, taking a look at them. That would be my motion.
Second.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff. Aye.
Aye.
Protest 473, Gretchen Swift, PI number 0086623.34. It's Campbell Estates, first subdivision, 1.037 acres. They're asking that the buildings be reduced from 369,646 to 296,000. Total land and buildings. That wouldn't be right. Because that's Campbell subdivision, it's not leased around. That's actually the, the value I read for the buildings was, for their total, is land and buildings of They're asking that be reduced to $296,000. Says we have not done any updates since bought. The deck needs replaced, parts of the fence needs replaced, windows are needing replaced, siding is deteriorating in certain places. We see photos, we did look at the photos. It would be my motion, number seven, that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the value to the assessor's recommendation as follows. The house is already in normal condition for its age, so we gave a 5% depreciation, functional depreciation for the water damage on that siding and on the ceiling. My motion, the land remain at $60,982. The improvements be reduced from $308,664 to $293,231. Total land and improvements from $369,646 to $354,213, number seven.
Second.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brons.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Protest 498, Megan Frickle at 2414 West Lone Star Road, Wellfleet, Nebraska. This is part of the northeast quarter of 24-11-31, also known as tract A, 6.21 acres. Total valuation, $252,807. Requested valuation, $239,534. Reasons, there were zero improvements made on the property in 2022, including the buildings and dwellings, no homes sold nearby. This is, was reviewed by charity. No change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. Purchased property for $245,000 in 2018. There were no supporting pictures accompanying the protest. Charity's recommendation is to leave land at $38,980, improvements at $213,827, for a total of $252,807. My recommendation is number four. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second. Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Last but not least, I believe, we have protest 341, Charlotte Jackson, 817 West A, North Platte. Property ID of 138?
We have 133.
I was gonna say, it's either an 8 or a 3, and then a 7, 0?
Yes, 1 is every 3, 7, 0.
Okay, that is, I could, I could go with that. This is Cody Land and Cattle, Lot 13, the north 200 feet, and the south 230 feet of like a .67 acres. I don't have a better legal than that. They are protesting the valuation of $57,955, requesting $39,000 due to the condition of the house. House needs many repairs, both outside and inside, see pictures. And that would be a very true statement, ma'am, that needs a lot of repairs. Charity reviewed this, and you evidently agreed, there's a lot of need for repairs, and you changed condition from fair to fair due to multiple condition issues. So, the motion will be number seven. Based on, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which would be land at $28,100, improvements at only $25,575, for a total of $53,675, number seven.
Second. Second is?
What community is that located in? Out on West A Street. I, I thought you said that, but I thought you said 817 West A, North Platte. 817 West A.
That's her main
That's not, that's not worth that, it's that.
The property address is 1902 North Sheridan Avenue.
Okay. Oh, that's the property address. Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all I Okay, okay. I was gonna say, because, man, I've been down A Street
They don't say that anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Good catch.
No, thank you.
That happens, I have to catch myself there.
For the record.
For the record.
For the record.
Williams.
Aye.
Brons.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
I thought it was maybe West A, like, you know, Wellfleet or something, because I saw that stuff.
Are we gonna keep hanging on to this?
I guess we are. What is it?
Vent, Vent
Did we give him a time certain?
He's gonna go
Who is he?
Mr. Benton.
I wouldn't let him go. Go ahead, please.
There might be a discrepancy on the law for footage. And so, if I told him that he could give me dimensions, I can make that adjustment.
This is borderline
Stretching it out.
This is, this is special treatment for a particular protester that is not being afforded.
Just FYI, I think they both understand that they sales out there are very insane. Actually, Steve Benton actually made mention of that $950,000 sale for the one bedroom house. So, I think they're both understanding this out there outrage. They're just making sure the property is correct and certified.
That's fine.
But still.
But that, that could have been done prior to June 30th, when protests were due.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization today?
Do we meet tomorrow?
No.
No.
Yes.
I guess we gotta
Tell us how you really feel, Wes.
The answer is probably not.
She's stepping in the Terry shoes just fine.
Okay, it is 3:56, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization.
Until Monday.
Until Monday, when we will
Have our regular meeting.
Yes.